I call this meeting to order, turn it over to Dr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the City Council, and the public. We're gonna start off our first budget work session tonight, which will start with the overview of our revenues and expenditures, and we'll move forward from there, as well as take questions that you may have throughout the presentation.
So, just for an agenda, as Dr. Richardson alluded to, we're gonna talk a little bit, we're gonna reverse things up a little bit. Usually, we save the worst for last, we're just gonna rip the Band-Aid off and start with the worst first. And so, we're gonna start talking about expenditures, we're gonna talk about revenues, and then we really hope to talk a little and spend the time to let you all do your talking. And we wanted to first start teeing up a couple of things. So, Balancing Act is a system that we have online, you can find a link on our website. As we've worked through this process, to balance the budget is truly a balancing act. Everywhere there's a plus requires a minus or another plus with a new revenue source. Balancing Act gives you the opportunity to go in and provide feedback to the city manager, as well as to counsel on if you want to reduce funding in one place, where would you put that? Or if you wanted to increase taxes, what would that look like? And so, we've used this for the last two years. In nineteen, we had about thirteen hundred views. Last year, we had a little bit over twenty-three hundred. So, it's a good exercise, and it's a good, it's very high level, so it's not a lot of detail, but it does give you some perspective in trying to balance the budget. So, the point of tonight is, as we have worked through the budget and with the presentation of the budget Monday night, there are a couple of large decision points that we need to sort of touch on, get the pulse from council, sort of find out where you all are. I know that as we've talked through things, you've been asking for a couple of different scenarios, but before we can really work on some scenarios, we kinda need to get some feedback on where you may or may not be, although we may not get to a decision, because we're early. We have multiple work sessions to work through these things. If we could sort of figure out where you are, we're gonna talk through a couple of these individually, to hopefully tee up some questions and further conversation. So, we'll start with the school funding request. As of right now, we have in the budget built in fifty-nine and a half million dollars for twenty-one. That's an increase of two-point-one million dollars over last year's budget. We know from the presentation that schools gave Monday night, they are at sixty-one point seven. Dr. Atkins alluded to a noted insurance adjustment that I believe the school board will be considering tonight. So, once you take that out, and then take out where we are with the current budget, we're looking at additional funding requests of about one-point-eight million rounded. Again, there, we have, as you know, we have some city contracts for maintenance, pupil transportation. We are, have a couple differences there, which we're still working through, but it still looks like we're looking at a difference of about one-point-eight million dollars. Again, employee compensation, we currently have built this budget around a two percent COLA for all employees, with the living wage remaining at fifteen percent. There's been some discussion about the possibility of looking at a three percent COLA instead of a two. Again, just looking to sort of test the pulse on where everyone is with that, if that's the scenario that you want us to start looking at. We know that that cost is about a half a million dollars. The race equity and the public safety issues, these were five programs that were basically, well, four programs, that were basically funded in twenty, sort of mid-year, using council strategic initiative funds, that we have built in with new funds in the twenty-one budget. Again, we wanted to tee up the conversation, if there were any of these programs that you wanted to, rather than adding them as new dollars, if there were any of these programs that you wanted to look at, the council strategic initiatives fund to fund those, and then free up some of these funds, perhaps use for something else, potential possibility there. The other area that we could potentially look for was some savings. We looked at the transfers from the general fund to some of the other funds, some of the larger transfers, that we could potentially look for reductions. Again, this would, you know, require some feedback from council. The transfer to transit is increasing by five-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars. Most of that is actually due to a loss of revenues from state and feds, some fare box revenue. Again, you know, whether there's some operational considerations, that may be something we could look at. The debt service fund was another, the transfer to debt service fund was another one that we talked about looking at. That's about two-hundred thousand, that forty-nine thousand dollar increase speaks to the meals tax policy that we have in place, but we do have a two-hundred thousand dollar increase built in for that one. And we've talked about the existence of the debt service fund balance that could potentially offset some of those. And then finally, for the capital improvement program, there's a cash increase of just under four-hundred thousand dollars. Again, that is potentially an area where we could look for reductions. Again, that would mean adjustments to some projects, or in the funding mechanism for some projects. But those are three sort of big areas of increases that are potential decreases.
Can you speak to the transit? If, I understand why you're saying it's the office revenues was driving it, what would be the impact of us adjusting that number in any way?
So, our initial figures, when we put together this, this had some, we had made some reductions to this transfer in the temporary salaries area, but we also had a three percent COLA in there, and so, when we, as we continued to develop the budget, we had some savings by dropping that to the two percent COLA. But what we did was, we then replenished some of those reductions, we had taken from the temporary salaries, the relief drivers. And so, there's still that, that was one area where we looked at, you know, service-wise, that would be a minimal impact, that we could potentially reduce that, and that was in the neighborhood of eighty thousand dollars, that could potentially be reduced there. But that was just one, one area, I mean, otherwise, we would have to really go back to the department and really discuss with the department what that would mean, but that was one area that we thought we could do without a major impact to the services.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, like, this five-hundred-and-forty-two would have an impact on that department's, like, so I'm just, it's not...
Yeah, if you took it all away, that would have a huge impact. There was just a portion of, maybe should have clarified, there was a portion of that that we could have reduced, so.
And that's, the funding is going down, right, because ridership has gone down in their formula?
That's Garland Williams is your director, he can come up and speak to that issue.
And while he's coming up, I think that, you know, it would have been, I would have wanted to see, you know, like, just, I know all the areas are important, but there are some areas that are linked to other larger goals, and transit is one that comes up consistently about how, getting that, you know, department in order to be able to move this carless city people keep talking about to, you know, individuals who are low-income being able to move around the city. So, if other departments were increased, and this one had an increase too, it would have been, I would have needed to know, like, how do they rank in terms of the increases some other departments received, instead of just receiving that it's a possible cutout of this one?
So, to answer the question, Garland Williams, Director of CAT, so, to answer the question about the five-hundred-and-forty-two thousand, when we looked at this number, this is really all linked towards the existing FTEs that we have, there's nothing new in this model. The loss of the revenue associated was, when MATA had, the state actually held some money back from each transit agency across the state, we got that money this year, that money will not be available to us next year, so that is reflected in our revenue drop.
One of the other large items that we have talked about is our change, potential changes to the CHAP program. I think a couple, one of the scenarios that have been, has been worked through is to increase the income threshold from fifty-five to sixty thousand, and then twenty is where we are currently, twenty-one is a scenario which adds another tier. And so, to make those changes between CHAP and the other programs, we're looking at roughly a four-hundred thousand dollar increase. One thing to note is that we did make some big changes last year to this program, and the budget this year reflects the actual applications and the actual assistance that was handed out. So, in some respects, you know, if we wait out another year to see how that falls out, or if there's a desire to make this leap, we're just, again, trying to test the pulse to see where everyone is.
Could I ask, on this particular chart here, as I look at, for example, somebody who is making forty thousand dollars a year, right now, they would get a seven-hundred-and-fifty dollar relief, next year, they would get two thousand dollars. That strike, I'm curious as to why this works out this way?
Those were the numbers I was asked to put together.
Okay.
I didn't set the thresholds. It was that...
All right.
That's it.
Had you been changed since two thousand six?
It's been a while, we changed it this past year, or nineteen, I guess.
Three years, two years ago, so this would be the third change.
Two thousand sixteen, or two thousand six?
Two thousand six.
Oh, okay.
And the, it would, could you talk about the tax ranges that people are paying, and the income ranges? Because I have that somewhere.
I'm not sure what you mean, the...
So, how much, we had the sheet at one time that had the annual income for the households, and the amount of taxes that the household could potentially pay, and have each household, but we had a range that, the tax amount that people were paying annually before the grant relief.
I'm not sure what you want me to, to provide. I mean, I, she's correct, the program had not been changed for a number of years. We made some changes, I believe, in two thousand nineteen, and then we changed it again this past year, effective two thousand twenty. And so, you know, this is, this is, this is where we landed. You know, I've done some, some calculations on how much was spent in each band, I don't, I don't have that on right now, right?
And so, someone, before we had it, where someone who was in that under twenty-five thousand income bracket, they could have a tax bill of three, four thousand dollars a year, those type of, that's what I was asking.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I...
You, to help them understand how much people...
Yeah, I think those were number, I mean, this was, that was a couple of years ago. I was trying to extrapolate from some census data to kind of make a guess at what people were trying, were having to pay, based on their income. It's very difficult to do, because I don't know, you know, who pays what. Yeah, I'm not sure.
The budget right now is holding flat to last year's ranges?
It, yeah.
Okay, so it's this first chart, right, right?
Right, we're currently going through right now, with those parameters as they are there, this is the first time through that we've used those. And so, then this would, you know, this would carry this forward to the next fiscal year.
And does the, does the CHAP program also have a limit in terms of the assessed value of a person's house, or is that a different program?
It does, the CHAP, the CHAP program, it's limited to three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, that's set by the VHDA home loan program.
Okay.
Which is, that's currently the max, so we can't change it until they change it.
Right, because I didn't notice in the budget, even after we expanded this program, the number of people who participated in it was reduced, I'm guessing, because the assessments have just gone up so much.
Yeah, we, we lost a hand, we'll certainly lose a handful of folks, just through attrition from home values rising.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, part of the conversation over the past three years has been, we can increase that number also, for families who own homes, who are in those income ranges.
You mean the home value?
Yes.
Parameter, yeah, I mean, that's, that would take a charter change, I think.
Yeah. And I have a question about the budgeted amount last year, which I think was at fifteen, one-point-five, right? So, what happened to those remaining funds, and why weren't they rolled over to be able to continue expanding the program?
Well, when we, when we did the budget projections last year, we were assuming that the folks, when we had made the adjustment to the CHAP program, we had not yet made the adjustment to the real estate tax relief program. So, the assumption was, that when we changed the CHAP program, all the folks that are in real estate tax relief are gonna jump to that program. A couple of months later, I came to you guys, and we changed the parameters of the real estate tax relief program to make it match what was in CHAP. And so, we didn't see the attrition in the, in the real estate tax relief program, and then, at the same time, CHAP didn't balloon quite as much as we thought it would.
And just for clarification, the one-point-five is budgeted in twenty, which is the current year, so we could carry that over with the year end, but not, that wouldn't be until, you know, we won't, we don't usually do that till, like, November.
Right.
Because the year would have to close, which would close in June.
Yeah.
So, it's like, even just ballpark, like, the amount of that one-point-five million that remains unspent?
I can tell you exactly, one second.
Thank you, because I can't. I don't have coronavirus. I have a cold, I've been to the doctor.
You've been tested?
I've been tested. Well, I mean, they don't have the Corona test.
That's true.
I've not been to China.
Any more questions on this slide? I'll get back to you in just a second.
No worries.
So, finally, on the expenditure side, we've talked to you about some things, multiple times about, that are not in the budget, largely departmental new requests. We received about eight million dollars of new requests. One that we've heard a lot about is the request for the fire department for the new firefighters. Again, just trying to get a pulse from everybody to see, you know, what is your desire, what is it that you'd like for us to look at? Again, the unfunded CIP projects, there's about a hundred-and-twenty-three million dollars worth of projects there that remain unfunded. We've talked about, Mayor Walker asked about a plan for addressing wage and compression issues for employees that are under fifty thousand. We know that's about, to do something, I think you had suggested about a half a million dollars, right? Was that a number that came from you? And then, the council strategic initiatives and equity fund, there was a suggestion to increase that. Again, there were also some discussion about two new positions, Deputy City Manager and the Director of Measurements and Solutions. Again, are these items that you would like for us to look at, to come up with some alternatives? These are things that, you know, we're looking for, some guidance perhaps.
All right. Well, and now, we're gonna go through the revenues real quick, and then we'll come back to, we have a slide at the end where we can start going through and talking through these decision points. Instead of going through these in gory detail, one by one, we've talked about some of these over and over again. I decided to, we decided to present these to you, and, you know, what we're seeing in the changes. And if you wanted more information on the city's revenues, within the proposed budget, we put the pages on the bottom, B1, and then B5 to B13, and then C1 and C2 is where you can find all the details on these actual revenues. There's descriptions, explanations, all kinds of details behind these, but, again, these are our local taxes, biggest one, biggest change being the real estate taxes. And then, with that, if there are any questions on any of these, anything under the local taxes, or any of the other revenues as we go through, feel free to stop and ask, and I'll answer them to the best of my ability, but we also have the Commissioner and the Treasurer here, who are part of our revenue team, who looks at these on a monthly basis, so we have plenty of people to help. And the, sorry, didn't mean to shortchange Chris back there, and the Director of Finance and the Director of Economic Development, so we should, we should be able to answer, answer most of these questions for you. Real estate taxes, as you know, council advertised, authorized us to advertise at ninety-seven cents, we, the budget proposed a ninety-five cent tax rate. Each cent is worth approximately eight-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. We wanted to show you this chart, to give everyone an information on, just purely based on the average increase. Now, some homes went up more, some homes went up less, some reduced, this is the average residential increase of approximately three-point-eight percent. If you were in twenty nineteen, if your home value was a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars up to six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, this is what your, your new assessed value would be, and then, the taxes and the difference in the taxes, and that first block shows purely the difference in taxes that you would be paid because of assessments. And then, you can see how it would compound. The next one is change in assessments, plus one cent increase in the real estate tax rate, and then the final one is the change in assessments, plus two cents worth, at each of those house levels at about a hundred thousand dollar increment. So, you can see what the tax bill would be to someone who would, the tax impact would be to someone who owned a home in one of those ranges. Next set here, we have our licenses and permits, intergovernmental revenue, charges for services. So, I wanted to point out, B-pole here on this one is going up by six-hundred thousand dollars, this is matching kind of what we're anticipating for the current year, holding that level. This is a pretty volatile tax, a couple very large taxpayers here or there, could really swing that one way or the other, so we don't want to move much from our projections. And then, some intergovernmental revenue we know of right now, as the state budget comes in, we might get more information on some of these. One thing we did know was, both the Governor's Bill and the House and Senate Bills proposed holding the state aid for police protection at a level amount, which was a little bit more than what we had in the budget, so we were able to increase there, but as far as reimbursement for constitutional officers, and the state highway assistance, all those things, we'll get a better picture, clear picture on some of those as the state budgets pass, but unfortunately, a lot of times, sometimes that's after we get our budget passed, so it's kind of a moving target, but if we get any updates on these, we'll let you know as we move through. And then, these are just some changes on our various areas for the charges for services that are moving up to match the actuals that we've seen recently. And again, if you have any questions on these, or any other revenues, any other specifics of the revenues in the budget, please feel free to ask. Here we have our, the miscellaneous revenue, that's going up slightly at two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. We have our other tran, previous carryover, that was dollars that were left over for the therapeutic docket program, that was carried over into, from FY nineteen into FY twenty, so those dollars will be used up this year on that particular program, and there was no carryover there, so that's the reduction there. The Human Services Fund, that's a big reduction. We had seen a one-time, we had looked at the fund balance, and we're taking a one-time transfer from that to bring the fund balance down and help balance the budget, but that truly was a one-time revenue source for us, and we didn't count on that again this year, so in that, those dollars are not there. If we take these dollars this year, we're not anticipating to really have those dollars in that fund balance, to be able to take another big chunk like that in this current year. Enterprise Parking Fund, again, that's, we're reducing that transfer slightly, and then the city-county revenue sharing, while it is going up slightly from last year's projection, the operating budget portion is going down about ten thousand dollars, because we're having a larger transfer to the capital improvement program, which is on this next slide. And that's where you see the meals tax, excuse me, the city-county revenue sharing is that first one, of about three-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand going into the CIP, and then we, the meals tax that Chrissy talked about, the one cent transfer to the debt service, that's the change in that, and then, our figure with the city schools, contracts, building maintenance, and pupil transportation. Total revenue changes of about seven, just under seven-point-eight million dollars. So, that was all we had to forget today, and then we wanted to kind of throw it back and let you, if there's any slide you want us to go back to, to have a discussion on a particular slide, or anything where you need additional information, let us know, we can backtrack and have that information on the screen while you're talking about it, but we really, for some of these, need to get some decision points, so that we can start, as Chrissy said, start crafting scenarios, so that we know what to look at, like, do we need, where do we need revenue, do we need to make other reductions, and look at these things as we move forward. I did want to point out, actually, the upcoming work session calendar, because there are a few items that we, next week, next Thursday, we are having a work session solely on the outside and the nonprofit agencies. I know there's been some, some email traffic and some communications about several of these agencies. I'm happy to answer some questions about those tonight. Kaki is, Kaki Demick is here, as well, our Director of Human Services, to answer some questions, but just wanted to remind you, we're gonna have a full two-hour work session devoted to that next week, where we can really dig into the details of the process, and how the funding fell out, so, again, happy to answer anything right now, but we do have that. Then the community budget forum, that's another chance for the community to speak, as well as the public hearing on the sixteenth. Then on the March twenty-sixth is our, our work session specifically on the capital improvement program. And again, if there's any unfinished items from previous work sessions that we need to discuss, we can always start off these work sessions, dealing with those, and getting to those items, but this is what we have on tap for each of these. And then, finally, if needed, if there's remaining budget wrap-up issues on April seventh, from ten to twelve, PM over at the Water Street Center will kind of hammer out our final issues, and then, on April fourteenth, we will approve the budget at five-thirty in the City Hall. So, with that, where do, where would you guys like to begin the conversation?
Just circle back to CHAP. Is this a one-time payment, or, so what's paid out, is it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a second-half payment. Originally, it really was a one-time payment, it was applied to the second-half bill. Now, it was changed to where it does, if there's any leftover, we actually send a check.
So, there's six-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars left.
With what, yes, I'm just sorry, I'm confused on, like, the timeline of which you're talking about, because as a, as a homeowner, you get a bill in January, wait, June and December?
Mm-hmm.
Which is splitting fiscal year, so I'm just, I'm sorry, could you just help me understand that a little better?
So, for the CHAP program, you come in beginning around in the early part of July, and you start applying for the program, and whatever benefit you get is applied to your second-half tax bill. It used to be that was, that was it, but as the, as the program got more generous, in order to pay, to offset some of the tax from the first half, we would send the taxpayer a check.
For the following January, so it would be on the fiscal year?
It would be on the, on the same fiscal year.
So, the amount that she just said was left still?
That's gonna, that's what's not gonna be spent, right, more likely.
Like, looking at the calendar year versus the fiscal year, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
In other words, you've spent everything that you expect to spend out of that line item this fiscal year?
Yes.
For CHAP. Give or take a few bucks. Yeah, yes, obviously.
Yes.
So, there's five-hundred thousand, six-hundred thousand unallocated. So, it does not, does not have a home anywhere right now, it's just sitting. I'm just sorry, I'm not clear, I guess.
Well, we would see that in the surplus probably at the end of the year.
Okay, well, I would like to, okay.
So, one thing I did want to bring up with that is, we had, with our projection for FY twenty, and Todd, you can jump in and correct me where I'm wrong, we had also anticipated a migration from the real estate tax relief for the elderly and for the disabled into the CHAP program, and because we're not seeing that, we're gonna overspend those budgets, so while there may be six-hundred thousand left in CHAP, because we didn't budget enough in those programs, we may not have that amount yet.
Some of that's gonna go back into real estate tax.
Some of that's gonna go back into the real estate tax relief program.
Probably not all, but...
Probably, yeah, not all, but, but that six-hundred, I don't want to get stuck and fixated on that six-hundred thousand dollar figure, because of the real estate tax programs, those payments come out at different times, I believe, so there might still be some of that that gets eaten up by those programs.
So, we shouldn't spend it yet?
Not yet.
And I guess the difficulty is the uncertainty.
And I guess the difficulty is, the uncertainty makes it, you can't really count on anything.
I'd have to leave that, he's been doing this a lot more years than.
I mean, I mean, it's, yeah, I, I, I couldn't tell you how many people are going to come in, I mean.
I think the question is, is there any way to kind of have some flexibility in this upcoming fiscal year's program that if there are excess funds within this, that we maintain them within this, and we actually do do more than we've done in this current fiscal year, but they're just, we have to commit to a certain program right now. So that's why, in my head, I'm just trying to figure out, is there ways to have some flexibility that if we find out at the end of this fiscal year, you know what, we actually do have some extra, and now we want to build in a more robust program for twenty-one with those dollars, but.
Well, you would need to know starting in July.
Yeah.
So when are the, when is the other program applications put in?
The real estate tax relief program? Well, the applications are in for that now. They'll start being rewarded with the first, first half bills. I don't know if everything's been processed yet, but we've taken all the applications. We'll know, Jason, when will we know what we're going to spend on tax relief?
Because that budget was kept, kept steady too, right? Their budget, and there was a slight increase there from last year, correct?
In the, in the, in the real estate tax relief?
It was a substantial increase in that particular.
I, I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Yeah, for, are you talking about between twenty and twenty-one, and the, or nineteen and twenty?
Even though there was a plan for people may apply for CHAP instead of the other program, that program dollar amount was increased too.
For, for real estate tax relief?
Yes.
I, I'd have to look at the numbers. I, I mean, it's been a while since I put the budget in. But I, I think when we anticipated in this fiscal year, when I was preparing the budget for this fiscal year, knowing that we had increased the parameters for the real estate tax relief, we probably did up that one.
We, we increased the tax relief for the elderly from one thirty in twenty to five hundred and twenty thousand to twenty, in twenty-one. The tax relief for the disabled went from sixty-one thousand to two oh five. And I'm looking on page H, H nineteen, just for reference.
So that's anticipating folks staying in real estate tax relief. These are elderly and disabled folks.
So there is money in both programs, it's just what, for potential increase? There was, there was money allocated to both programs for potential increase? And we know that for the CHAP program, that what she said is six hundred thousand dollars remaining, and there could be some remaining in this program, or it could be spent. We don't know yet, because there was an.
That sounds right.
Okay, so do we know if there was an increase in applications?
No, I doubt there was an increase in applications. We, we typically do, we trend downwards usually, the city's getting younger.
So just FY, for the rent, the tax relief for the elderly in twenty, again, that budget was at one thirty. We've already spent two forty-two. So in that, in that relief program, we're over budget, where CHAP, we're under budget.
Right.
So that's why we kind of, to Ryan's point, need to look at these net of all the programs.
Sorry, we, we did, actually, I was able to pull up prior, the FY nineteen budget from nineteen to twenty, when we made those changes. While we did have a substantial increase in the CHAP program, we reduced the tax relief to the elderly by almost two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and the tax relief to the disabled by almost sixty thousand dollars to account for that migration to the CHAP program. So there was actually a reduction in the actual budget of those two items, account, thinking that we would see people move to the CHAP program. So that's why that ballooned so much, and some of these others decreased. So there was a slight overall increase, but it was just a changing of where they were. And this current twenty-one budget that, that we have put forth, kind of shifts it back to where, because we're not seeing as much change going into the CHAP program, and, and puts some money back into those other relief programs to account for not seeing that movement.
So overall, the total on those, all programs is relatively steady. I just, I'm trying to do the math in my head really quick, but it's just a matter of which program that we're allocating it based on the direction that we've taken these programs.
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I don't know where it is in the budget, but it was somewhere, the number of people who have been, I guess, awarded grants to these different programs, and the trend line for each of them. Okay, right, yeah, right there, each twenty, they were all, all went down, I'm guessing because of the assessed value issue.
Well, partially from the assessed value issue. If you're talking about the, the CHAP program or the real estate tax relief program?
Well, the CHAP program in particular, but I think all of them saw reductions.
That would probably be more from, from the assessments going up. I mean, if I had to guess.
All three of them went down.
Yeah.
Real Estate Rental and Housing Affordability Grant.
And they've, and they've trended down for years. I don't know why.
And you also, I felt like there was a concerted effort to communicate to the community.
Mayor and I kicked in doors and, I mean, everything else we could last year, and it still, it still went down a little bit.
Just to sort of sum up, as I'm looking at the chart on H nineteen, as I do a quick scroll scan of the math, comparing FY twenty to FY twenty-one, and lumping all of the different rent relief and tax relief programs in together, it looks like the difference is about a seventy thousand dollar reduction in FY twenty-one. We sum up all of those different categories, about two million dollars either way, but the, the, you're, you're sort of budgeting for twenty-one needing seventy thousand less than is budgeted for this year. Does that sound about right?
That sounds about right.
Related to, just while I'm looking at that same page.
What page are you on?
H nineteen.
We're in the budget book.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, big book, sorry, okay. That, there are two categories for rent relief, for the disabled and for the elderly. And the effect, one is about two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars this year, and next year, you've got about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Has the, is that decline based on the sense of experience from this past year of how that's gone?
Are we talking about rent relief?
Rent relief, yeah.
Yes, yeah, that's right. That's just looking at how many people have come in over time.
So when would you all possibly know how much money is remaining?
So the rent relief, I mean, the tax relief and the rent relief are with each bill, right?
Rent relief is, it doesn't matter. I mean, that's going to be in the second half. We'll know, we'll know how much we're going to spend on real estate tax relief first week of April. I'll have a very good idea of it.
So we're in a position to maybe table that and see what we can, what we feel comfortable that may come from that leftover to roll over?
Well, we'll be approving the budget the next week, so.
It's, I mean.
It's kind of a decision if you want to put it in the budget, or if you want to take, I mean, leave what you have and wait for year-end, or decide to make changes and we have to find money to.
I would caution you too, that that's a one-time bubble that's left over from when we were really making an educated guess at what we were going to see when we really tweaked this thing out last year. And so we're seeing the effects of that now. So the, the projections I made for this budget that you're discussing now, I've got a lot better idea of what I'm going to see, because we didn't make as many changes. So it's, it's, it's a one-time, it's a one-time infusion, whatever we end up seeing.
A more general question, I guess you, this is not related to Todd. As we look at some of these decision points, even with some of the revenues available that we're talking about, there's still more that's being asked of us. So if we were to, what are, what would you, what are the thoughts on what would be the first things that would have to be cut if we were to be looking at more money to the schools, or to do some of the other initiatives? I'm just trying to get a sense for what, what process that would go through.
I mean, I think we would really have to look at, and that's why we're asking for some of these decision points, because we'd have to look at it in order of magnitude. If you're saying, well, we'll give a hundred thousand dollars to the schools, that's a lot different at what, how we would look at going through and prioritizing cuts versus, we want to give one point six million dollars to, to the schools. Then that's, I mean, because then we're talking much greater level of service impact and, and things on that nature. So that's why it's hard for us to say, where would we go first without, that's why we wanted to tee up some of these decisions to see, is there a consensus to do? Maybe we don't say, oh, we want to go the full way, or if it's like, three councils to say, we want to do more money to the schools, then we would have to say, okay, well, now we need to figure out in order of magnitude to figure out where we look at, but do we do the, a penny or two pennies on the real estate, or do we have to come back for a separate cut? So without knowing that order of magnitude, or it's hard to put together a scenario that we really would feel comfortable with, without, you know, really digging with what we, into the unknown.
A little Frozen Two reference there.
I haven't seen it yet, so I, it was a totally random reference, it was.
I've seen it, right.
Although my daughter hates that we haven't seen it, still haven't seen it, so.
So I just have some questions about, or comments, questions. Just looking through the budget, there was an increase in most of the departments, if not all. And I had some questions just around like how those increases were decided, and then, like, which ones? You know, were cut.
So the departmental budgets that were submitted, people submitted a, what we call, or refer to as a base budget. Within those submissions, if there were market rate, I'm sorry, adjustments or some percent adjustments for things like contracts we're going to change, the training, we were going to send four people instead of two people, things like that accounted for some of the increases. Another part of the increase that shows up in departmental budgets is that whatever merit that we budget for, in the year that the merit is awarded, we budget that in as a, as a lump sum. And so it's the next year when that increase shows up. So that accounts for some of the increase in every department that you're seeing.
The coal that we put in last year, four point one seven.
Correct.
I saw that as a footnote everywhere, and I was just, was trying to make sure I understood how that worked. Could you just go through that one more time?
Yeah, so the, whatever merit increase, because we don't know what it is, whether it's two percent, four percent, three percent, whatever it ends up being, we budget that as a lump sum. And that's in the employee benefits section, it's in the citywide section on the budget, you'll see that. That's the million forty that we've been talking to you about for the two percent. The next year, then we allocate that, everybody's salary has gone up by that amount, so that's the base for the next year, right?
The department's not going to allocate it all separately versus centralized. I'm sorry, I was getting out, it's just a matter of shifting the dollars.
Yeah.
I'm with you. Took me the second time to get there.
No worries.
So from going through there, there were some increases in the social services, human services, the ABRT process that, and I don't think all of these organizations, if we're talking about, truly talking about equity, should have to compete for dollars in that way. But there were also some organizations that we've talked about over the years, like San Berres, who are not being funded, and they are doing the most work, and probably the most impactful work for the Hispanic community. So those are some of the, you know, trends that I saw, you know, through here, and I'm concerned about that and how even those changes lead to equity. And some of the increases or decreases were slight, but they're still there, and then there are some departments who rely on, and even, you know, for looking at, you know, finally getting this and looking at FIRE, there, most of the requests in here have increases in them, but that is not the same for, like, police. So I'm just wondering, just how were they weighed? And how, like, if their primary concern was hiring FTEs, then why were these other line items approved? Were they given the option to either hire people or increase in these areas?
So specifically with regard to the FTEs, that was submitted as a new request. That, the, in terms of the departmental increases, we started with the submissions from the departments. And so those increases within the departmental budgets were at the discretion of the department and, and what they wanted to put in. And then as the review happened, both with meetings with the city manager and the departments, if things were in those submissions, then decisions were made to reduce. But the FTEs in particular were submitted as a new request and was not submitted as part of what you're seeing in the book as their operational budget.
No, I understand that, so I'm just trying to figure out, like, how was that, you know, I guess you attempted to answer it, but.
Sort of like what the, what were the departmental requests, and then like, which one was approved or not approved? Because I've wondered that as well.
Well, I don't, so I think that's a lot of detail. But I am interested, especially when you see, like, equity initiatives up here as, you know, drivers of the budget, being kind of out of whack, that's how I read it. But then you can go through here, and you can see that there are all, you know, there are increases in every department where they weighed. Find an example, example, see if you can work that.
Because Ryan, we did share with us the whole list of all the requests of departments that were new, and there was only like, a few that were actually granted for very specific reasons, and they were all listed in that chart. But there was eight or ten million, like somewhere in the eight to ten million, eight million, including the FTE requests, and I'm sure, were there other FTE requests, I'm, I know of others that happened throughout the organization that also just like, across the board, were not considered as a starting point? Or was there, there was, they were all considered, and it was determined that there wasn't an essential?
So we, excuse me, that's what we were talking about before, in terms of when we first started the budget. We were talking about what was essential and what was considered non-essential. And based upon that, in our discussions with the folks who worked on the budget, as well as a few of the department directors, that talk about what, you know, could be reduced, adjusted in various budgets that we, I mean, throughout the city, the, the city budgets that we were reviewing.
Okay, so here's an example, D ten. So in the salaries and benefits, and then the total here is, under that is five, five hundred eighty-six thousand and seventy-seven dollars. If you go down to other expenditures in the list, then it's eighty-one thousand five hundred for Unity Days, a hundred thousand for professional services, which is the support relief for home-to-home based on that, fifty thousand dollars due to the addition of the Office of Equity and Inclusion. And then there are three other brackets, and so if you subtracted that from the amount at the top, that's three hundred and fifty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars for those three items.
Out of the five eighty-six, you're saying?
Out of five eighty-six.
Five eighty-six minus two seventy-three.
Yeah, so the, if you look, the, the increase in that, in that, that the mayor's bringing up is approximately three hundred and twelve thousand dollar increase, and, and the other expenses side from twenty to twenty-one, and that is the.
Yeah, they're just talking about the bridge, because last year, the budget was two seventy-three, and now it's five eighty-six. So it's not all new, it's just the delta between twenty and twenty-one, and they've identified those categories speaking to that.
Correct, those are, yeah.
Those are just new changes.
Those are the items that are showing as, as the changes. What we do down there is to explain the changes between twenty and twenty-one, what, what was the, the drivers between? What was the drivers between those changes in each individual budget?
So there's other items that make up that 586, they're just similar to what we ever had before. This is just new stuff that they itemize down here.
And those were, and we specifically called out the dollar amounts on those. And if you'll see in some other departments, we specifically called out dollar amounts because those were rather large dollar amounts that we wanted to say, hey, this is brand-new money that was being put in, and here are the reasons why. Whereas if it was a contract, like a contract going up 5%, we didn't specifically say this was 5,820. You know, so on those items, but when there was a large expenditure such as these, we tried to call those out so that you could say, oh, okay, these are the big ones that are sitting there. And this one is a stark increase because of those specifically Home to Hope and the Office of Equity and Inclusion and Unity Days that.
But Home to Hope is in another.
It's wrapped.
That's in the non-departmental, right?
It's shown here.
It's shown here.
Because it's now.
But it's also in another section, that section that states that it's spread across departments. Shouldn't.
It's all under, because we lumped it all under economic development now.
Is there a section that says non-departmental? It's a category that says it's spread over across agencies?
Yeah, but, yeah, that's page, you're looking at page, is E4 and E5? In the budget, and.
Okay, so CRB is what I'm thinking about now.
Yeah.
Okay, so that wasn't included under, and we talked about that earlier.
CRB, we put that into the, into the non-departmental because we weren't exactly sure where it was going to live once it was fully formed.
This is a little bit of a rabbit hole, but the strategic planning, P3 dollars, could you just give me a sense for what is that for? I just, because I saw that was in last year's budget for something similar, like, what, because we're also going under, we're going to undergo a pretty robust process this year, and I want to understand what role that those dollars might play in that.
So the largest part of that budget is for ClearPoint, the software that we use for the scorecards and tracking those measurements. The rest of that was for strategic plan updates, developments, we use consultants. But the largest piece is for ClearPoint, the software that we use for that.
Do you set software elsewhere?
It's strictly for like performance measurement.
I've heard, I've heard of it in other organizations, but.
And even on that page, the sister city budget, is that somewhere else? So that's cut. And then the, how much of the marketing assistant was spent?
Chris, Chris Ingles here, can I ask, how much? Is Chris Ingles going to come up and speak to that? The marketing assistant. How much have we spent to date this year?
We're spending it now, we'll spend most of it. So about 100,000.
That campaign went live, like, how many weeks ago?
First of February.
So I thought we were supposed to spend that if restaurants were, or, was it restaurants only? Or that was for the meals and lodging tax increase, right?
It was focused on the meals tax increase last year, and the council set aside 124,000 to assist with the marketing campaign.
So was that not an if then, like, if there were problems associated with the meals tax increase, that this would help?
I'll take responsibility for that, I felt pretty strongly that a small percentage should go back to ensuring that we were doing some robust marketing for those, that sector.
And is there any metrics or measurements of that campaign?
There will be, it just started, it's primarily a social campaign, although there's a direct mail piece to it as well. So three, four months, we'll have it, it's going to run for six months, so it just started.
Can I go back and to page D10, which we were talking about earlier? And the 586,000 other expenditures? I'm just looking at the, at the bottom of the page where there are six separate entries for, under other expenditures. Am I to understand that the 586,077 is the cost of those six items?
That's what we're just saying, it's that minus the amount from last year. It's just only talking to incremental changes from the prior fiscal year. So if you look at fiscal year '20, it's 274. So it's 586 less than 274, and they're just bridging that gap. So they're saying these are new expenditures for this fiscal year.
For example, one thing that's in other expenses of every budget is our general insurance charged to those departments. We did not see an increase in our general insurance this year, so that would not be called out in any of the, in the other expenditure changes. So there's things like that that don't change from year to year that aren't specifically called out, as I was saying, this is just those, or Councilor Hill, excuse me, was saying, this is just those items that are being, that are changing from year, year every year.
Okay, so 312, basically.
Yes, this speaks more to the 312 and the 245.
Of which 631.5 is designated for Unity Days, Home to Hope, and Office of Equity and Inclusion.
Correct, and the rent is approximately 19,000, if you want to add that in as well, because that's when I looked up earlier.
Now we're 250, so 60-some thousand dollars going to dues, subscriptions, travel registration fees, education, training, printing, and advertising.
This is kind of a random question, and there may be no answer to it. But in that section, the number of people, the number of city residents visiting the downtown job center went down from 800 to 900 to, like, 280. I just, I'm just curious if there's anything driving that significant drop in number of people going to the job center?
Mr. Ingles, speak to that. We're actually seeing more folks now, so that number is a little bit misleading, given the fact we had some staff transition, and in that process, the surveys were not being administered to all the people that visited. So we had a low count for the part of, the last part of FY19. We're actually now seeing some pretty high numbers in terms of visitation.
Thank you.
Another concern, because I guess at this point, since, just to highlight a concern, like, the CIC wasn't, isn't approved in our book, and it's not approved in the Vibrant Communities Fund. And there also isn't additional dollars dedicated to the partnership between economic development and the Minority Business Fund. And so again, that's another equity initiative that's cut. So the Vibrant Community Fund, the CIC, is, that is not being recommended for funding. And then in the non-departmental, it looks like the CIC used to be there, and it's not there now. It's not receiving funding there either.
What page is that?
Non-departmental.
Try what section?
No, no, I'm trying to find, maybe I was in another book.
No, I remember that was in there.
E5 is non-departmental. E5 is non-departmental.
Yeah.
The citywide, okay.
Citywide section.
Was it in last year?
The CIC has been, has shown up in the, in the management section and the organizational memberships and workforce development agencies page, that's where it's traditionally been. We haven't had it in the, in that E section that you referenced, the citywide.
So wherever I saw that, it was missing, right?
Yes, that was, that was one, and.
They were denied?
Yeah, this was one of the, based on the matrix that we shared with council, and the funding, this is not.
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking, is the, is the Vibrant Community Fund and then the, where it was in the budget, were they the same?
Yes, yes, they're the same, it's the same, it's just where it shows up. Like, for example, in the Vibrant Community Funds, you'll see dollars for, like, legal aid and Piedmont Casa. That, those agencies are in that book, but they show up in public safety, under the public safety agency. So we tried to, within the budget book, group these organizations around the function that they play. And this was one that was workforce and economic development, which fit best into these organizational workforce agencies, whereas like public safety and human services.
I get it, I just couldn't find it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's not the easiest to follow at times.
In the PowerPoint presentation, one of the decision points is the transfers to the debt service fund and the capital improvement program. Is that accurate? Is that, are both of those funds, the situation is sort of, if you reduce the allocation to them, you're increasing what we will pay at a later date? We're just sort of putting it off?
You're right.
But I did have a question that I asked before about the fact that we were going to allocate more money from reserves, that, would that be sufficient for this year or no? Are you going to allocate both the same amount you would have allocated from the reserve and then this transfer money? Or did you lower the amount that you would have transferred from reserves and then added this, what, Michael? The debt services reserve fund?
Yeah, so we can talk, this is something that we'll talk about more with the capital projects presentation. But to, to your point, right now, within the current projection, we have debt service for '21 at about 12.2 million dollars. In the projection, we currently have a transfer from the general fund of 11.2 million. That's what's built in the budget right now. So if we take out 200, we're back down to 11. The difference between the 12 million that we're scheduled to pay and the 11 that we're transferring in, that's a drawdown on your debt service reserve. To your point, can you reduce that transfer? Absolutely. It's just, is, there are so many moving parts to, how many bonds do we end up selling? You know, we know right now the projection had that we were going to sell 21.5 million. We're looking at those spin rates right now and teeing up that sale, we're not going to be there. We're not going to be selling that many bonds. So that pushes that back. But you have to keep the big goal in mind. So right now with the current version of the CIP, we've got 83 million dollars worth of projects that we've allocated or said we were going to sell bonds for. We have roughly 66 million dollars of bonds in previous CIPs that we said we were going to sell bonds for. So that's roughly about 150 million dollars. Depending on how those projects weigh out, when they get kicked off, when they get finished, depends on when we sell those bonds. So when you look at it in total, whether it's one year or 10 years before we get to the point of selling all those, at some point, you know, our reserve of roughly about 11, I'm pulling those off the top of my head, but I think there's roughly about 11 million dollars of fund balance in the debt service fund.
I thought it was 13.
Okay, 11 or 13, either way, that's roughly a year of debt service. So even if you look at the projection we have now, even increasing, and I was just playing around with some numbers, even if we increase the transfer roughly 600,000, the first year moving up to seven to eight additional dollars in transfers from the general fund, we still are at a negative in, you know, about six years. So it is, to answer your point, could we reduce it and could we cover the debt service? Sure, but it's definitely kicking the can in terms of, right? And then what hap, I mean, the reason why we keep slowly increasing this transfer over time is to reduce the stress on the general fund and sort of smooth that out so that you're not looking at, you know, a debt service transfer that goes up. I mean, even 600,000 is huge, that's almost a penny, right? So, you know, it's, there's, there's lots of things that can change, there are lots of variables that change, and it really is sort of just a shot in the dark of where you think you are at this point in time. But again, we know at the goal line, we're looking at about 150 million dollars worth of bonds.
And those numbers include none of the school reconfiguration, right?
That is correct.
Which is a time that we're definitely going to have to have the conversation about tax increases. And if we start increasing taxes now on top of the assessment increases, then people are going to be really overwhelmed. But we also, back to your and my, your comment Heather, about, you know, the data shows, right, that the restaurants and, you know, that they did well, that they're doing well, that there hasn't been a. So at some point, we're going to have to be able to make those decisions and then not feel like we have to, you know, do a give back.
I would say that the restaurants would not say that if you were to speak to them individually. I think as a, as a sector, yes, there's more restaurants and there's been growth. But if you look at the individual restaurant by restaurant basis, they are hurting. I mean, it has not been, I mean, that's just, that's just the feeling.
But there could be a lot of factors in there.
I'm not saying that there isn't, I just felt that when we were looking at taking additional, we were going to be, like, reaping the rewards of that tax. And given all that they reached, like, all the communication that happened that last year, I thought it was a pretty small contribution just to give back to that sector, to, if they are successful, it's good for us, we want them to be successful. It's a huge tax benefit to us.
I'm not saying I don't want them to be successful, I'm never at home, I eat out, people come to visit, they stay, I get it. But what I'm saying is if it's not in the future, not even about this amount, but looking at that, we can't do everything. There's going to be a certain point where you're going to have to figure out, like, what, what we can do.
And this year, we're not going to allocate that 124,000, that was a one-time thing.
I understand that, my point is that based on the data that we received, they didn't need it. Whether our individual restaurant didn't sell the same number, no, I'm not going to give an example again this year.
Well, and I just, I just want metrics, especially like, again, it's not going to happen this year, it's almost a moot point, but I just, I question the, the impact of some of these campaigns. That's another question for the tourism board as well, just the metrics on the effectiveness of the investments, but it's another conversation.
I'd like to clarify that everyone in the city employee got 4.17% raise last year?
That's correct.
At a minimum, I know there was some other additional raises given to bring up to minimum standards, et cetera. But I just wanted to make sure that that, that is, there wasn't anybody, any division left out or anything, okay?
To our knowledge, it was to be, it was to be done across the board.
On the question of COLAs, one of the things that we heard when we talked and listened to the school board presentation was that their budget was built around giving everybody a one-step increase plus either 1.75% or 2% to come up to an average increase of 3%. I'm just wondering, when we talk about an employee COLA of 2% to 3%, are we comparing apples to apples if we compare to the, to what the schools talking about? Because they're talking about a step plus 2%, a step plus 1.75%?
Dr. Atkins is here, so she can respond to your question.
Could you run on the value of that?
Well, I'm just curious, I, 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 I mean, I can see what the, looking at the budget, it's about 1.75 million dollars going to the additional salary, so that's not the issue. I'm just trying to figure out whether your 3% is equivalent to this 3%.
So, good evening. I guess the question that I would ask is, is a step on the pay scales that the city is using, is there a step that happens prior to applying that 2% or 3%?
Right.
And if I knew the answer to that question, then I could answer.
We have no steps.
You have no pay tables?
We have no step system.
Well, we have pay tables, but we don't have a step system.
Do you move on that pay table? I'm not sure I'm the one to answer that question.
Okay, well, it, it sounds like they were able to answer the question to say, no, it's not really the same.
No, it's part of what that 1.2 million dollars should produce.
Right, right.
Yeah, but we don't have it yet.
Yeah, I got you.
What we did was looked at, you know, our counterparts in Alvaro, and they were looking at a, excuse me, a 2% raise this, going in fiscal year '21.
Their school board or?
No, no, just employees.
Well, we had this conversation before, and Heather, if you remember, we had John asking to increase salaries a couple of years ago, or a year or so ago, where we were not even increasing our drivers with like cat and pupil transportation at the same rate. And I'll say the same thing I said then, I think it's important for us to be consistent across the board. If we're going to allocate money for the schools to increase, then we should allocate money for our employees to receive the same increase.
But at this point, we're still 1.8 million shy of the school's request, so, I mean, we haven't allocated.
I mean, it seems like that that's still part of the discussion of getting there. And even if we don't allocate that, that doesn't mean that whatever we do allocate, that they won't use it towards that because they can use it towards whatever they want to use it for.
So there was some decisions?
Yes. Yeah, I think generally, obviously, the, the big one being the schools. And we understand if we can't get exactly to exactly the number we need right now, but just if we know a general consensus of you're, we wanna hold pat, or hold, stand pat with where we are versus giving some type of an increase, some magnitude of an increase. And then at that point, that allows us to build...
Well, and I guess too, you know, step with that is, are you looking to fund any increase with new taxes? Or are you looking to fund an increase with city reductions?
Well, I, I would join with what Mayor Walker said, that if we're gonna have to be raising taxes and it looks like there's a good chance we might, if we're gonna be funding school, massive school renovations, I'd, I'd sure hate to shoot that wad now. But anyway, I, I have a couple of thoughts. First thought is, and this has nothing to do with what the schools actually decide to do, but a significant portion of what they have asked for, and the 1.8 million dollars, is built around the notion of an average increase of 3% of for their, for their people. And if we're increasing our folks 2% and a 3% increase for them is roughly 1.75 million dollars, if we were to say, you know, we're, we're okay with you all increasing by 2%, which is essentially what we're doing in the city, that would mean cutting out about 600,000 dollars. Now, if you all wanna go to 3% and find other cuts, that's fine, that's on you. But I, I, I have a little bit of a problem in, in sort of fully funding a request that involves a higher pay increase for school employees than for non-school employees.
So I was advocating for the higher percentage for our employees versus, you know, but, so that's one thought. The other is that, you know, we really just have to decide on a mount for the schools or not.
Perhaps we don't tell them how to spend it.
Because we can't dictate what they do, whatever we give. So I guess there is, okay, so we can go through the first. At this point, if you're interested in, so the staff will know whether we're interested in the real estate tax, increasing the real estate tax one cent or two cent. I'm at this point not interested in increasing it one or two cent, neither, one nor two, yeah.
I mean, at this point, you know, I'm, I'm inclined to agree with that. Again, just because we know in the future, we've got this school reconfiguration coming down the line and other major capital projects, as well as that number, we're gonna raise less revenue from the real estate tax than that number suggests because of the relief programs too, right? So it's, we would raise a little less, granted, you know, it's, they're also funding that relief program. But it's not, that's, it's not, that 800,000 wouldn't go right into the budget.
No, the, what has impacted that before is just the percentage of that, the 40% rate that goes into the schools. The revenue, the, while the real estate tax would increase if people were not getting this relief and paying it, it still has been...
I guess my question is just, is that number pre or post people's grants that they receive?
So that 800,000 is the pre-grant. So to your point, if you raise the tax, you know, a penny or two pennies, the assumption would be that you would wanna increase the tax relief to adjust, which would in net decrease the amount of new money you're gonna get. You know, it's gonna be 1.6 is what you're gonna get, but part of it would be to, you know, as, to add another expenditure for the tax relief. Is that what you mean?
Right, just sort of, the, 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 the amount of money that it frees up for us to make these expenditures is just a little less than that 1.6 million would seem if it went up two cents.
That's right.
That's the only point.
I, I agree, I'm not, I'm not, I don't have enthusiasm for raising the tax rate.
Not with this, not with the kind of assessment increases we just had, as well as, and I'm also, I mean, yeah, no. I'm not, not unless we had to, and I don't, I don't...
All right, next, city schools full operating request.
So I'm still confused on how we're bridging these numbers. So the 1.8 plus, 1.8, 2.1, it's almost four. And then they reduced their amount from original request because of the, what they're anticipating is gonna be. But I, I still was confused on Monday night.
I think this chart will explain it a little bit better. The, the top number is what they had in their budget as the request as of Monday night. The second number, what they noted the potential health insurance changes of approximately 425,000. And then the bottom number is what we have in the budget as our contribution. So the, the, the net of all those is the 1.8 million dollars difference.
And I just remember in our work session, what, do you remember the number, the pre-present, the presentation, the 61 million? What that number was during our work session discussion with them? Because then after that, I thought that they went back and scrubbed out, and I asked this on Monday, but I still wasn't clear, 700,000 according to the paper?
Is that including the insurance adjustments?
This was separate, so before we knew about insurance. Can Dr. Atkins clarify this? Sorry.
Ms. Hill, you are correct. The first budget work session that we had together, our request was right around, and, and Ms. Powell is standing right behind me to make sure that I give the correct number. Thank you, Ms. Powell. So we started off with 4.5, 4,520,330 was our request. And then we did, we cut from there. And our first round of cuts was right around 343,000. What I'm gonna do is let Ms. Powers, yes?
And I'll back her up.
Okay, so the original proposal was 4,520,350. Now, that proposal had embedded in it 442,130 in cuts. And I only point that out because we never do a proposal that doesn't have some cuts included upfront. And those are cuts not from requests, but from, from current operations. Usually at that point in the process, they're enrollment-driven. So we look at like our staffing needs and any programmatic changes that, and then our growth has slowed, so we were able to reduce some positions. So that was the first round, but that was, that was embedded in the original proposal. Then after the work session with, the joint work session with you all, we went back through and cut 343,238. And those were reductions from requests that were in the original proposal. They weren't cuts to our current operation, they were reductions to request. And then a third round was done as the conversations and dialogue continued, and that number is 303,197. That, those are cuts to current FY20 budget. So the total between the reduc, the cuts that were in our original proposal, the reductions that were in, then reductions off that original proposal, and then a round of cuts is 1,88,565. Now, if you want the details behind those things, I just wanna, the appendix that was in that presentation packet from the last time we were with you, was that Monday night? It's, it's, we kinda try to keep it in columns, and I do that for the school board so that they can see the different iterations to reflect the direction and the decisions we're given at our various meetings.
Yeah, and I apologize for a reason, I was just, was only remembering on Monday night, you're talking about the 1,300,001, but it really is a 340 and then a 303.
Yeah, there's...
And then there's the 450 after that. And that still has a, at this 1.8 delta.
And I think one of the areas that, that we started at different places. When we started building our budget, we started at the amended bud, the amended budget. And I think that's where the 425,000 delta is, yeah.
Yeah, actually, the, you, you guys look at that 1.7, and we've, we've been talking about more, we think we're more at a 1.3 delta because of the, it's 468,000. That was a supplemental appropriation that's in our current total appropriation. And so we start off our current total appropriation from the city.
I also wanted to point out with the raises, when the governor develops his budget, he puts in his budget the raise for teachers, the percentage of the raises. So when we're building our budget, we consider what the governor is putting in his budget, and our budget is built off of his recommendations, or it was her, but off of the current governor's recommendation. So we start at that point with the percentage that we're going to give our teachers for raises. So that helps to guide us in our raises. The governor will fund us at a 2% or 3% of whatever is put in his budget based on the standards of quality and the number of teachers that we are required to have in each of those positions. So some of that cost is offset if the governor's budget passes. And we have factored that in.
So you still will need the school amount if the governor's budget pass, or you will not? You will? Okay.
We would.
All right, so that's the next discussion point is, there is 1,790,657 dollars needed for schools. And we are not increasing revenue. And the only way that this could happen is departmental cuts.
One, I guess one question that I would have, just looking for, for decent-sized chunks of money. The 389,000 dollars designated for the additional funds for the CHAP program assumes a series of very significant changes. They're not incremental changes at all. I just pointed out the one for a 40,000 dollar income, they go from 750 dollars to 2,000 dollars as we've added a new category and we've also skipped people around. Supposing we were to say, I mean, I, I'd be curious to know what it would look like if we were to say, rather than 398, let's say 200,000 dollars.
But that's an additional revenue too, like beyond the 1.8. These aren't, cause that's not built into the budget, this one.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, this is in another ask, so it only does the opposite.
And so for CHAP, there can be different scenarios. Again, this is one of mine that I have spearheaded because we've been talking about keeping families in the city, saving homes. I think I've shared, but there was a two-bedroom house built in 1949 that sold on my street and was on the market for less than a week for 284,000 dollars. So again, we just had a Harris Street Development approved Monday. Things like that, you are bringing more people in, there's no cap on who can live in those apartments, what their income is. And if we're not being as generous as Todd mentioned, and I don't think it's generous enough is why I keep pushing it with families to figure out how to keep them in the city, we're just gonna have a city full of wealthy people who are gonna be serviced by employees who live outside the city and come in to work and then go home. And if we don't do something to combat that, which it hasn't been done and it hasn't been on the top priority for the city, then that trend will continue.
I mean, I'm, I'm very supportive of this program. I mean, I, I was also with you, like saying that like this was the one that hadn't been touched in forever when we approached it. I'm just, right now, as we're looking at all these balancing, like right now, the schools, to me, is the most important among the things right now that we need to figure out in terms of bridging.
Well, that was where we were at.
Yeah.
Lloyd brought that up the chat.
I think he was looking at it differently.
No, and I still think it's important because again, we are gonna fund a school system that's gonna, it's gonna continue to serve one segment of the population, because that's all that will live here. So I'm thinking about all of that, but again, we're back to this decision point. I was going in order that they were presented, which I'm assuming is order of importance.
I think he was trying to fold in here, and it was mistaken, so.
You guys can dictate the order you wanna talk about these.
It's fine.
This is just the order they fell out in our, in our slides.
So again, if we, at this point, we're at the point whether we're gonna increase anything else or nothing else, and then whether we're gonna have staff find cuts to increase, right? There's no other scenario.
Yeah, I mean, any, any additional expenditures that we want to do, we have to identify what the corresponding cut is.
Yeah, that's where I'm at. Like I just, it's hard for me to say a firm number not knowing the impact it's gonna have to balance out. I, I do want to try to find some more money for the schools. I don't think I'm gonna get to 1.8 because I don't, I don't know that's possible.
Honestly, I think we'd be lucky to get to 0.8.
To 0.8?
Yeah, and then I think that's, I think we would be lucky to get there. I, I don't know where to cut stuff. I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I have to admit that this is, this budget, for me, being the first year, it's, there's not enough detail for me to really dive into to underst, I mean, I'm still learning each department, let alone what, I mean, that's why I'm relying on the staff with the experience in the budgeting to advise on what the budget should look like.
If you get to a point where you find something that you're thinking about funding, we can go back and bring you recommended cuts where we find that we'll be able to do. As I mentioned before, you know, with this budget, a lot of things are very tight in terms of, you know, looking at our overall revenues and our expenditures.
But with that scenario, which is different from, you know, in previous years, it's just, this is what we have to work with. And we're either gonna increase taxes or work within this range, right? I have a really hard time unless, you know, these departmental increases are being used for something that's non-essential, that doesn't affect, you know, quality of service, doesn't impact, you know, make employees have to work harder to do their job, for you all to go through here and cut to fund unless that's the case. And I'm assuming that you all wouldn't have approved the budget if that, I don't know.
I think it would be hard-pressed to find a budget that has big increases that would make up a significant amount of cuts that wouldn't be impactful in a negative way to find additional funding.
Like if there was 300,000 dollars being spent on printing, then we could cut that. But if that's not the case...
I'm not saying any fat in this budget.
There's no department that has 300,000 dollars worth of printing in their budget.
You know, or something like that. I mean, if it's not happening, I don't, I don't know.
I mean, I think one, you know, one area that, you know, there were 900,000 dollars in new programs that were not in the budget before, that might be an area you can look at. But I think if you are going to not raise revenue, but look from within, or look to departments, I think that's a big deal.
But this is the other thing, you're talking about the 900,000 dollars in equity initiative?
Right.
Yeah, no, so...
Well, and that's what I'm saying. I mean, those are things that, that, that's where we need the judgment from council is like, you know, you need to set your priorities and, and, and figure out what you wanna do. But if you're looking for big chunks, you know, it would be to go to new things. That's one big thing, right, that are new.
But those things were supposed to, they weren't supposed to be one, one time. We didn't have a conversation about where we're funding these for a year.
Right.
Right, they were supposed to be rolled in to the budget.
And they are.
Yeah, so they shouldn't be considered. Yeah, no, I know, but they shouldn't be presented, which is how they have been presented. And I feel like they are presented here as if they are the problem.
Well, I think, and I, I agree about preserving them. I think it's just functionally, now it makes the budget tighter, cause they're, we're making them permanent, which is a good thing. But they just weren't last year.
But again, we're talking about just with the general fund, 178, how much is the...
196.
196 million dollars, and you have less than a million that's... A hundred and ninety-six million dollars, and you have less than a million that's allocated towards equity issues that are supposed to attempt to try to make a direct impact.
I agree. The question is just, always, what are the corresponding cuts? But, I mean, I agree, I want to preserve those things. I have to guess, the other thing is, again, like, we can make, you know, I don't think it will happen, but, you know, we could, the other consideration also is, you know, we can make it a little easier by making, reducing allocations to certain, like, the debt fund and things, but that just means next year, we just kick, we make the decision, you know, put it off a year.
I mean, we're just gonna end up having a balloon payment down the road, basically. And then we're cutting everything, and then we're laying people off, because debt services always has to be paid first.
So we don't have a dollar amount for the schools?
Well, I have suggested a rationale for basically one point two million additional. That still doesn't get us, it doesn't get another one point two million in cuts, but at least it's a start.
Okay, wait a second, I missed that.
Okay, as I said earlier, the one point eight million dollar request that the schools has up there, has built into its cost structure a three percent increase for staff. The rest of the staff, non-school staff, we are proposing to fund at a two percent COLA. If we say to the school system, if you wanna give them three percent, that's fine, but we don't have to fund it, you're gonna have to find the other one percent, we're only gonna fund it at two percent, then the one point eight million becomes about one point two million.
Okay.
Now, it still doesn't get us down to zero, but it gets us a third of the way there.
So now we just have to come up with one point two million?
That's right. Piece of cake. But I said, we gotta take, gotta take steps, and that's the first step that I can think of. The, the other issue, and I completely understand not wanting to sort of short-change payment to things like debt service funds and so on, but I also wonder, is there anything, we talked about not wanting a balloon later on, is there anything in this budget that seems like sort of a balloon, that seems like a big lump that we're being asked to ingest this year that we won't have next year, or is it all just gonna continue forever?
Because it's all timed with the CIP and those projects, and when they come, it is always a moving target. But, to your point, based on the current projection that we have for the debt service, we know we are not gonna be selling the amount of bonds that we had planned for. And interest rates have just dropped, so...
I guess the one piece of it, I mean, you, you could think about reducing the amount paid to it, if there's a corresponding cut of a CIP expenditure, like a ten million dollar parking garage.
Well, you're now talking about a different amount of money, you're talking about the three ninety-nine, five eighteen, I'm looking at the two forty-nine, seven seventy-six.
But it will relate to the debt service payments.
But where is that paid, where it has the amount of money that has already been spent in these projects, and what's remaining?
It's not in the book, that's just a separate report that we can provide you.
Fund balances.
Is it, the bulk is just new stuff going forward?
I know, but I read it somewhere, just when I was...
I think it's part of the planning commission materials, I believe we had sent, we had sent out some information with, with, with what had been spent to this point, or what was projected to be spent within the next six months, I can't remember exactly what it was, but I believe there's something along those lines with the information we sent to the planning commission back in November, December of time.
Chrissy, last year, it was that kind of decision point that allowed us to have, what, eight hundred thousand that kind of came out of the sky lovely?
So, the eight hundred thousand from last year came from a change in the way that we are, we were projecting the debt. So, as I mentioned earlier, we have sixty-six million dollars of bonds that we've authorized for projects, but we haven't spent yet, because we don't sell them until the project's underway. And when we were looking at the projection, we were front-loading that, to assume that, okay, we've authorized these bonds, we're gonna sell them, and so we had the debt service at a much higher level earlier, and now what we've done is to say, look, that's probably not realistic, and so we've spread them out over time, to be more realistic with our typical bond issue, which typically, we're, you know, we're selling anywhere from ten to fifteen million when we go to bond sale. Now, having said that, we do have some big projects that are in the CIP, whereas before we've had a lot of smaller projects to get us to that ten or fifteen million, now we're talking about projects that are ten million apiece. So, that does change that dynamic a little bit, but the, that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars was just sort of a one-time adjustment to sort of realign our projections.
Is there any other places that you see money being more realized between now and the end of the month, just by virtue of more time behind us, and actuals, and every month matters?
Well...
I mean, we can, on the, on the revenue side, I mean, I think we're, we're pretty firm in our figures, we can reconvene the, the revenue team one more time to, to really find, go through with a fine-tooth comb, but we're talking maybe a hundred thousand dollars here or there, we're not talking, you know, the one point two million, it would be a smaller incremental change, it's not, it's not another, oh, we just came up with a half a million dollars, or six hundred thousand dollars, I don't expect it to be anything on that level, maybe we get twenty-five thousand from here, and another fifty from here, but, I mean, on that end, that's, we can, we can look at that, but...
It's prob, it's probably irrelevant to this budget cycle, because it'll happen after we pass it, but there is on the horizon, it seems like the General Assembly is very likely to pass legislation authorizing localities to impose up to a five-cent tax on plastic bags, again, probably relevant for this budget cycle, but it's something. I know, I guess one, it's not a huge amount of money, but, you know, there was the eighty-one thousand dollars allocated to continuing Unity Days programming. Again, if we're looking for cuts, that's a conversation, if that's, if we wanna prioritize continuing that programming or not. I don't know where I come down on it, but I know that it's an area of money. But I, I went through the budget, and it's just hard to find a lot of areas where, you know, we wanna cut something.
Yeah, I, as I said, I don't see any fat in this budget, there's nothing, and I, I'm very appreciative of staff who have worked very hard on this, so, thank you.
And my hope, my hope would be, let's just say we are looking for another million, or whatever, whatever Lloyd said. That it may just be a matter of a lot of little things that we can compile together, even Michael's idea, like, that's just, that's eighty-five thousand, that's, you know, one chunk of the way there, and a lot of little pieces, and I'm, I'm happy to participate in that process, and go through and provide you with some suggestions that I personally would have, and some smaller items that might add up to do that, but...
But hold on. So, again, Unity Days, I told you all last year, is not something that I was, you know, thrilled about rehashing every year, but there are people in this community who have, they're expecting that that is going to happen again, and there's already, the planning has already started, right?
Which is an example, sorry, like, maybe, it was just an example, because he brought it up.
Oh, I know, I understand, but...
Well, and anything we can cut, I mean, I feel like at this point, anything we can cut, there's gonna be a strong argument to be made that it could be kept in. So it's just one random thing.
Yes, but, I mean, how are we even making those decisions? Like, how, a new program that one department or one area wants to start, what is it being weighed against? Like, that it's worthy of being cut for another department, or to have a new program?
I guess we don't know, because we haven't seen it.
The budget team goes, I guess she goes back to the departments, and you ask them, and I'll be honest, last year, I was not in favor of just identifying, like, a certain percentage, I think it's just important for people to come forward with what they think their first order is, and we looked at it holistically, versus saying that everyone has to cut three and a half percent, whatever that was last year.
All right, well, let's try this again. So have you all talked to people about this budget? Staff?
We've heard from staff.
Yeah, you've heard from staff, but this is...
I know, that's my whole point, is that it's already been a stressful process for them.
Yeah, for all of us, because of what we had to fund from the previous fiscal year carrying over into this year. Not just talking about equity, but also, too, you talk about capital dollars that were spent in previous years, and now we're having to pay for it in these forthcoming years, as well as other things that have been, in terms of overall expenditures, we talked about the four point one seven, you know, that has to be carried over, you know, and then other positions that we've put in, I mean, we're still having to carry all those expenditures. So as far as going back and cutting, I mean, we've tried to trim it as much as we could.
That's what I'm, that's my whole point.
Yeah, yeah, I just don't know where else to cut.
Yeah, and even with the four point one seven, I shared with council multiple times last year, that I thought that there was just a better way to do that, that was more equitable, versus the way that was done, so...
And we wanted to make sure that, you know, we, you know, the employees were taken care of, you know, we looked at, you know, for example, the insurance rates, you know, we're not increasing that, you know, we looked at, you know, the COLA, we're still doing that, but not to the tune of what it was last year, you know, and a lot of big increases were done last year, which puts us over in terms of, you know, salaries and benefits for, you know, this forthcoming year.
Well, sorry, what was that, four point one seven?
The percentage increase.
The percentage of COLA increase. But there are also a lot of things that, that are related to equity that are not even up here. I mean, there was a million dollars cut from the equity fund that was supposed to be, so that was already slashed. The minority business funding is not there, right? There are some things that have been expenses that have not been rolled over, and that did not make this budget.
And along with that, in the, a former ABRT, currently vibrant community funds, like you mentioned, the free clinic, foreign internship program, city schoolyard gardens, CIC, and some other things have been zeroed out or reduced because of that process.
But that process changed, yeah.
Right, I know, but...
Yeah.
And the people who sit on the, I think, I thought the committee changed, it was basically a council-appointed committee, right?
No, I get it. I mean, it, I've looked at it, we didn't get this information until later, it's not, for me, ideal, or what I would have wanted to happen. I mean, we were still funding a lot of the big organizations, since, I mean, we'll talk about this, at the point who already get a lot of funding, they do, they are able to write those grants, because they have the money to have grant writers and stuff, and some of the smaller organizations are not. But, again, we said that there was gonna be a process, I guess, but it's not, that added some stress, I guess, is what.
Can I ask one other question about the Office of Equity and Inclusion? The line here, it says, on page D nine, "The city council approved the creation of the office mid-year FY twenty, as anticipated the new funding included in the proposed budget, along with any unspent funds remaining at the end of FY twenty, will be sufficient for FY twenty-one operations." What is the assumption about what funds would be unspent remaining at the end of FY twenty?
I think at this point, it's, it's still an unknown, as we haven't hired for that position yet, and so the council appropriated a hundred and ninety-seven, or, excuse me, a hundred, yes, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in FY twenty, out of the Council Strategic Initiatives Fund, and whatever dollars from that program that are remaining that don't get spent, because of, when we get, depending on when we get the program up and running, and the office up and running, would be able to be carried over into the, the next fiscal year to supplement what's in the twenty-one budget, it's just, at this point, I don't know.
Yeah, we're, we're not at that point in terms of hiring for that position. We're looking at it in terms of the job description, and being able to put that out for, you know, as a job announcement coming in the fourth, I mean, coming very soon.
Well, it sounds like, then, there's pretty much all of the money allocated in FY twenty would be available.
Yeah, because essentially, what it is, is coming out of the discretionary account. So what we're saying is that, you know, we have to, it's, it's a one-time expense, so with that now, we gotta carry it over into FY twenty-one, into the regular general fund expenditures.
Okay, so the practical effect would be that the, one of two things, either that the Strategic Initiatives Fund, whatever, would not be depleted by a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars as we might have expected, or else that that money would be available in FY twenty-one, which sounds like it's basically the same amount, the same amount of money that is being recommended in your budget for FY twenty-one.
Yes, and the one thing I did wanna caution with, that, the one ninety-seven that we approved for FY twenty, that was prorated salary and benefit amounts, it was not a twelve-month salary and benefit amount, we did, as we got into this budget, we looked at where we were in this process, and realized that there was gonna be some remaining dollars. So, this one ninety-seven that's in the budget is also, goes along with that prorated amount, so it's not a full-year salary and benefits, we were counting on some carryover to be able to fully supplement that for, for this office, and as we move forward.
Is there a plan with a budget attached to it for a full-year operation of that office?
This one ninety-seven, that is it for FY twenty-one, and we wanted a person to come in and be able to be in charge of that office, and then be able to tell us going into FY twenty-two, exactly what will be needed for that office, in terms of staffing, as well as other things that they would need.
I guess what I'm, what I'm kinda getting at is, if, if there's, if we're only gonna need to spend a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in FY twenty-one, we've already allocated it with the expectation that it would roll over.
Well, that amount, if, if that's the case, and that amount will stay, I mean, I'm just saying, if we didn't spend anything from the discretionary account, I think that would stay, right? And then we would have to basically fund it all, and, and still in the general fund in twenty-one.
So what you're saying, but I would like to point out that this was an equity-related conversation, I know the two things have now been merged, for just council strategic, whatever, council and for equity, so it still should be something equity-related that that money goes to, if there's funding left over.
Well, I mean, it sounds like with their number of, of allocations, civilian review board is new, and things like that, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm looking for ways to, to get us below one point eight million, I've suggested, I've suggested one idea, I don't know if anybody has agreed with me on it yet, but I'm looking for other ways to get there, and if it looks like that two hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, a hundred and eighty-one dollars, isn't gonna get spent this fiscal year, and it's all there to be rolled over, one of two things happens, either we roll it over, or we don't, if we don't roll it over, it's still there in our, in our strategic investment fund, or, in which case, that's, that's a pot of money that maybe we decide is worth, you know, basically, we end, basically, we would end up funding the civilian review board out of it, for example.
The civilian review board is already in the budget, and we allocated fifty thousand dollars from the surplus for that, too.
Yeah.
So there is money somewhere. Okay.
Do, I mean, do we all have a range that we wanna have them go in, at least identify opportunities for the schools, ask? Like, responding to Lloyd's one point two?
So, for me, I, even for the stuff that I have, you know, the equity initiatives on here, if there's not some kind of holistic response to how you look at that, it is not fair to just go and say, just cut. And we're not saying that this is the commitment that we're making, and this is, like, the budgets are going to remain in this range, this is the dollars that departments have to work with, or whatever, to go and ask them to go through another set of cuts to fund other things that we don't even have any control over, that's not fair overall, unless we've set and gonna have the conversation about what is a priority, so that means that we need to have a, we need to meet before then, and so that takes a different conversation. We need to agree upon, like, what we're gonna fund... We need to agree upon like what we're going to fund, what's a priority, direction that we will want to give to them about cuts. You know, do we want to, you know, fund a eleven million dollar, eleven million dollar parks and rec program? Does that set precedent, precedence over other things, things like that? Those are the type of conversations. If we are not having those type of conversations, it's not fair to just go ask departments, um, when everybody is working and doing their best, um, hopefully to go through another round of figuring out as stressful as those conversations have been going. So I'm not comfortable with just saying, oh, there is one point eight million up here, find one point eight million.
And I'm not asking that, I'm just trying to get a sense for what this team of staff, maybe, maybe the department might recommend or some opportunities for us to try to bridge that so that we know. Right now, I just, I'm not clear on what I'm deciding against because to me, the schools are certainly a priority, but I'm not really clear on what I'm comparing that priority to in terms of what is some of the low hanging fruit? Do we have any low hanging fruit? Maybe we don't.
So I think the slide where we talked about the transfers, those are certainly big dollars that are swipes. You know, we've talked about things that are inherent risk with reducing any of those. Those were big swipes we were trying to put out there for you as ideas to provide some feedback if maybe that's where you want to be. But maybe what we want to do for sake of just kind of moving this along is rather than trying to decide on an amount right now is to maybe just figure out where you all are, are you, is everybody in favor of trying to find some extra money for the schools? And just table the amount right now, but just if that is a priority, then we know that and, you know, we can add that to the list and go back and take a look and maybe, we've still got further work sessions to sort of hash out what that amount might be. But is there a general consensus with everybody that we want to find additional money for schools? Does that help?
No.
Okay.
It, it doesn't. Like, how don't, is it helpful? It's not helpful to me.
It's a starting point for us to be, try to take some steps forward. I'll, I'll have, and many work sessions we need to, to get through this and everyone feel good about it.
I understand that, but what you're saying, so the schools saying that they've made all the cuts that they can make. Our departments are saying they've made all the cuts that they can make. City staff is saying there's no more money for any equity initiatives, they are one time. We heard Monday from, again, fire and police about what their needs are. There's not enough money for those things. Where, and unless we are talking about the items like Michael's talking about, if we're going to say we're going to cut our losses with some of these C I P projects and let them go, then what else would we, we are all talking about things that are going to have a very human impact. And I don't think that's fair. Now, if we are switching gears and we're talking about some of the C I P projects and taking some of those off the table.
But those are, yeah, that's a very different category of funding. So I think we're.
But it is impacted by the transfers from the general fund, it's impacted by the debt service payment, it's, it's still impacted.
I mean, if we looked at the transfers, uh, and basically cut them in half, and if we say basic, you know, you've expressed some apparently thought that perhaps we didn't need to have as much money in, in the unity days, cut that in half, we've now cut, that would amount to about six hundred and forty thousand dollars taken out. Uh, if we've also cut the schools by six hundred thousand dollars, now we're two-thirds of the way to our goal.
So unity days has already been cut. I mean, it was a hundred thousand dollars in the budget last year, we gave fifteen thousand dollars from the surplus. So the amount that's coming from this budget is less than it would have been.
Fifteen thousand from last year's?
We, in December, right, we allocated fifteen thousand from the surplus for unity days.
But we're also have already programmed eighty-one five in this budget.
Yeah, what he's saying is cut that in half.
Oh, I see, yeah, if we cut it.
I, I, I thought I had understood that, that you had some reservations about whether that was a wise expenditure of funds. If we don't cut that, we got six hundred thousand dollars. We got six hundred thousand dollars.
I got a lot of thoughts about how money is spent, but it's not just about what I think, right?
Okay, I, I'm trying to figure out ways that there might be some support for cutting one point eight million dollars.
I understand that, but what I'm, so unless we are having the conversation that says that over everything else that needs to happen in the city, the school is the most important. And if you all want to take that vote, you know, we can, then we don't care what else you cut, go and find one point eight million dollars.
I care what we cut, that's why I want to know what the options are to cut before I commit to a number for the schools. But I will be first to say, I want to be able to give some amount more to the schools than what's in this budget.
And I understand that, but they've already told us that that would require them to go back to departments and have them cut.
The amount that I'm talking about, the difference between one point eight and one point two million works out to about one percent of the amount of money that we would be giving to the schools. Uh, it's less than one percent of their entire budget. If we, I'm just using very round numbers here, if we then take, uh, half the various, um, debt service fund transit, uh, those transfers, take those out, that's another six hundred thousand dollars. And then we've got to find another six hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts. And that again, kind of feels like it's roughly, uh, if we look at, you know, how many paper, you know, what, what the travel budget is and what the papers and pencils are, things like that may be findable. I don't know, but that.
So would your?
Nobody else has suggested anything, so.
Would your position, Mayor Walker, be just not allocating no additional, um, monies on these decision points?
Unless we are hearing something different from this table here, which they haven't said anything differently yet. I mean, I understand what Chrissy recommended in terms of just say you want, but we, we can't just tie that to, uh, that that means that we are asking our directors to go back and find cuts.
But, but it seems like there's some other pods of money that may not be going back to the directors to find dollars, like these transfers we're talking about. But I want to know, like, I don't want to take it away though from Garland's planning in his budget, but it seems like, so it's not necessarily that whole amount, but there are a portion of that you feel that maybe we, I just, I want to know the number of that we really feel comfortable that if we said that we didn't want to do those transfers, it wasn't going to have operational impacts. I just don't know what those answers are.
So I think for transit, it was less than a hundred thousand dollars.
Right, that was actually able to maintain.
That could be cut without doing harm.
Correct.
And what was that for?
That was when we originally created the budget, um, we had made some reductions to the temp salaries, but we also had a three percent, um, COLA in, in the calculations, and when we reduced the COLA, we took that money and put it back into the temp salaries to help, um, boost the relief driver salary, the, the pool that was available for the relief drivers. And that was something that it was, they had initially made that reduction and then we came back and said, hey, we were able to find some funds within your budget to help boost, you know, help reduce that amount that you initially cut. And so this would go back to the initial reduction that, that they had requested, so it's in terms of, would there be a service impact? I would have to talk with Mr. Williams about that to see exactly what there is. But it would be potentially a minimal impact, a less of an impact than saying, coming and saying, we're just going to take dollars from X or Y.
So what I'm hearing is that employees would not receive?
Would transit budgets, a, a pool for relief driver salaries based on the number of hours that they project they need? And when we are doing our budget projections and our discussions with our, our partners in the county, I don't know if Mr. Williams wants to speak, you could probably speak better to this if you want to.
Part of the funds that were, um, that, that Ryan's talking about, the eighty thousand dollars was taken from the temp side. We have funds that sit in our full-time salaries and temps. So what that means is that, um, the pool of drivers that we use for our temps, I would potentially have to not use some of those individuals, um, to make sure that I can continue to fund the small amount of folks that we have on the, um, the full-time side.
But you've already taken into account any changes from your temp to F T Es and you have relief drivers because they are driving buses.
So.
Potential.
In, in working through with the, the budget office, we, we went through and I think last year there was, or this year, there was an adjustment from some of our temps to full-time, so like five of them. Um, that's.
Four.
Four, four, thank you. So four of them were adjusted from temp to full-time. That's still below what we really need to make sure the, the system operates properly. But we were, we were, um, trying to make sure that we, um, there are a lot of needs in the city. Um, and we were trying to make sure that we're good partners, but we're trying to manage the process, so we're bringing in some temp, I mean, some consultants to help us look through that model. But if you're cutting eighty thousand dollars, we may, we, we should be able probably to manage that. But if you're talking about cutting two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars from our budget, there's no way we can manage that and maintain the existing model that you have in place. What you're looking at is potentially our service models that we have, um, thirty-minute service goes to our hour service. And that's, that's, that's service that we don't want.
We need to be going the other way. Last year, I think we knew there was like twenty positions that we really would need to make from temporary to full-time to feel like we really can provide the services that we want.
Correct.
And were you able to include any additional F T Es in this year budget?
No.
There, there are no additional F T Es, there's no adjustment in the F T Es from, um, temporary to full-time. And that was our goal, to be able to do that, but, you know, I mean, we had to cut to make sure the budget was balanced where we could. Just, we'll plan again for it in twenty-two.
And that speaks to your point. I, I, I get it. I do.
All right, so I think just since it's past time, we should probably hear from the public if anybody has to leave, if they were planning, um, before we continue. So I'll open it up for public comments. Is there anyone here who would like to speak?
Hey folks, uh, I'm Rory Stolzenberg. I live between, on Water Street, between First and Second. I heard you guys wanted some free money. Uh, so I've got some free money suggestions for you, uh, here to talk about parking, uh, but not the parking garage, uh, much to your delight, I'm sure. So the Parking Enterprise Fund, uh, was spun out of the General Fund several years ago. Um, and it took over, uh, both the revenue from the parking garages and the lots and parking enforcement, like fines. Um, and actually it has quite a lot of money coming in, uh, so much money in fact, that, uh, in this year's budget, it makes a profit of one point four million dollars after its transfer to the General Fund. Now, staff has said in the past that their aim is to make the Parking Enterprise Fund self-sufficient, um, which I think to most people who've run a business, that means break even or better. Um, and typically, when you make a profit, uh, you then dividend those funds to your shareholders, uh, which would be us, the city. Um, so, uh, I would suggest instead of accruing a balance in that fund, uh, because it also made one point one million dollars last year and five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars the year before that, um, instead, uh, dividend it out and use it for something, anything at all. Yeah, it's clearly not paying for the garage, uh, it's not going anywhere else. Do something with it. Um, other suggested sources of revenue, uh, scooters bring in a hundred eighty thousand dollars a year. Uh, in theory, those are earmarked for bike pet improvements, uh, after paying for the part-time scooter director, don't know if they've been hired yet. Um, that money is not, uh, detailed in the budget right now, uh, I'm not sure where it's going, there's no money for bike pet improvements. Um, so, uh, one suggestion would be to account for the money that's coming in already. Another suggestion would be to reduce or eliminate, uh, the limits on fleet size. Uh, right now, there are two hundred seventy-five scooters and fifty e-bikes, that brings in about a hundred eighty thousand dollars a year. Uh, that's artificially capped by the city. Um, scooter companies would love to bring in more and give us more money for them. Um, so double the fleet size, get a hundred eighty more thousand, a hundred eighty thousand more dollars. Uh, lastly, revisit the, uh, the meter program, um, which when it was canceled by staff, uh, in early twenty eighteen, was supposed to be revisited, or sorry, not by staff, by council, uh, was supposed to be revisited within a year. Um, it has now been more than a year. Um, and yet there are no meters. Uh, I think it'd be executed better than it was last time. Um, but it will both improve the availability of parking downtown, um, make the most useful spots, uh, available for people who need them, and, uh, bring in a bunch of money. Um, so there you go. Um, there's at least two million dollars for you.
Thank you.
Chrissy, I did have a question about that Parking Enterprise Fund. Could you speak to that a little in terms of how that's funded and like, you know, because I had a question also, like, why are we focusing on being standalone and where do those dollars go?
So, um, and Chris Engel can jump in where, um, where there holes, but, uh, originally there was five hundred thousand dollars allocated for the parking fund several years ago, um, to start up an enterprise parking fund. The idea was that it was supposed to be established as a standalone, um, fund whereby the parking revenues would support all of the parking expenses, um, would also lead to a manner in which we would be able to borrow money for a parking garage without having to put it in our general fund C I P because those parking revenues could then support the, its own debt. Um, at the time when that, uh, took effect, there, I think the revenues, um, moving those to the parking fund was going to create about a two and a half million dollar hole in the general fund, so we couldn't do that all at once. Um, and so the decision was made to move all of the parking revenues to the parking fund, have the offsetting expenses in the parking fund and the net of that be transferred back to the general fund initially with the goal that every year that transfer would be reduced, um, to build up exactly a fund balance in the parking fund to be able to address some of these things. Now, what we know is that it takes a long time and a lot of money, um, and so building up even a four million dollar fund balance is not enough to pay for all the debt that would be required. Um, so again, it, it, it comes down to a choice, but that's sort of the history of, um, how the parking fund was established. But those revenues were set aside and designated for that only so that we could in the future establish a standalone authority as a tool to be able to operate and issue debt and, and move it away from the general fund.
So what is the balance in the fund now? Is that four million?
So I think for the twenty-one budget, it's projected to be at about four million. But I think right now, is it two, Chris?
It says two hundred seventeen thousand, is this number sixty-two dollars?
Is that for twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's project, that's again a projection because twenty is the year we're in, but, yeah. So it looks like the, according to the actuals, um, we ended up with one point six at the end of nineteen.
And then.
To get up to four and then?
Well, and then, I mean, so the, the, we're transferring, so the total revenues back for the general fund, I mean, the total revenues projected to be created in twenty-one, um, is about four point nine million dollars, offset by expenses of about three point five. Um, and so the fund, you know, the difference between those two is building up the fund balance in the parking fund to offset, you know, eventually try to offset some of these expenses.
So if, if by the end of the fiscal year, we would expect that balance to be roughly four million dollars, which it sounds like the, the numbers are suggesting, uh, what?
Bless you.
Is there a plan, an idea of what we would do with that money, you know, like I said, within the next couple of years? And if we do in fact have to build a parking garage a couple of years from now and it's going to cost ten million dollars and we got four million dollars sitting in the bank and presumably accruing another million dollars a year? Maybe I'm being overly simplistic, but it seems like that's a good way to get to where we need to go.
Chris, do you want to address that?
Philosophically, the idea of the enterprise fund is so that parking pays for itself.
Right.
So that you're not burdening the general fund for some, but, something that some people might not use. So like the golf fund and the utility, um, the gas fund, those are two examples of enterprise funds that attempt to do the same thing. They're not always successful, but that's the theory behind the enterprise fund. So, um, certainly there is a balance there. It's council's choice to do what you wish with that balance, but the intent was to set aside money so that you can get away from having to have a C I P request for anything new, such as the garage that's now in the C I P in the future. So you can certainly. So you can certainly diminish that balance that's there for some other purpose, but it takes away from the original intent that was initiated about four years ago now to create an enterprise fund whereby the revenues generated by parking would then support parking, long-term maintenance, any new capital needs, as well as alternative modes of transit, was one of the thoughts as well. We just haven't gotten to the point where we have enough of that to do anything significant with.
Since the purpose would be, since a parking garage is already in the CIP, that this would be a fund that would be used to build an additional parking garage in addition to the one that's currently in our CIP?
Yes, or long-term maintenance of any of the existing ones, yes. The West Main Street is the other area that has some potential needs for parking. And, you know, no plans for that at this point at all, but that would be a likely.
But we could also apply these funds towards the planned project if we desire it.
There's probably some complications with that in terms of bonding and whatnot, but in, in theory.
You could certainly use some of those funds to help offset the debt service payments.
Well, and related, I know, I think all of us have got a little bit of feedback from, we'll talk about the amount of money allocated to the golf fund, just sort of a background of why that exists and the impact if that allocation to the golf fund, I think it's a little over a hundred thousand dollars, is reduced. I'm just not exactly sure exactly the history of that.
Well, that is in hand for itself.
Yeah, I'll, I'll speak to that, since I was here when that was. So many years, in theory, the golf fund has always been set up to be a self-supporting enterprise fund. In practice, there were many years where the budget, where we were having to make adjustments at year end. And about three to four years ago, there was a discussion with the council at that time about looking at golf the same way you would look at any other recreational program and saying, instead of making this a true enterprise fund, we are going to supplement the golf program to a level of X, which at the time, I believe, was like a hundred and forty thousand dollars was where, somewhere, somewhere in that neighborhood where we started. But it was, it was a decision by council. They said, yes, we are going to supplement the golf fund on an annual basis. They have been reducing their reliance on that as the, as, according to the, the folks at the golf course, as the course is improved and play is improved, they're able to increase their revenues. Moving to a outsourcing of the maintenance contract has also helped with, with that reduction. But it became a, okay, this, we supplement our aquatics program at X percentage. We're going to supplement the golf program too, and I, I believe this is only at like a one, somewhere between five and ten percent. I, I don't know the numbers right off the top of my head with, with how much that is. But that was where we came with that, that. So that could be a, again, that could be a decision that this council makes that we don't want to supplement this the same way we do other recreational programs.
And the trade-off presumably is they just operate fewer hours or fewer days of the year or something?
I, for, I mean, for that, for that hundred thousand dollars, I would have to, I would want to venture a guess of what would have to be adjusted at this point. I would have to talk with the, the individuals at the golf course.
I don't get the hundred thousand dollars. As I look at page H thirty-five, it shows Medicare Golf Course Budget, one million seventy-four.
It's not self-sustaining. A hundred of it is coming from our General Fund.
Okay, I, I, I don't see.
So the nine hundred thousand is coming from?
From operations? Is that right?
Yeah, that's coming from, they, from charges for the services they provide, for the rounds played, lessons, cart rentals, food, all the, the things that they, they charge for merchandise, everything that they, all the other revenue that they bring in. But if you.
I was trying to figure out where in this document it tells me that the city is kicking in a hundred thousand bucks out of the operating.
Actually, if you look at section C, and there, there is a, it's section C three, at the very top of the page, the, the non-General Fund revenues.
Uh-huh, I see.
This golf fund and the last item is the transfer from the General Fund. And it started at about a hundred and fifty, then they've been reducing steadily each year. And so they, they continue to, as they become more closer and closer to self-sustaining, they, the first thing that gets reduced, they don't, the first thing they look at reducing is that General Fund transfer. So they continue to reduce that annually to try. Their goal, if you ask them, is to be back to that one hundred percent self-sustaining. But when the economy took the turn, golf was one of those luxury items that people saw that the rounds dramatically dropped at that time, and so they needed the additional assistance to keep the course running.
So help me with the structure of this book. If the, it shows transfer from General Fund on page C three, which is non-General Funds revenues, where is there a comparable notation on the expenditure side of the General Fund allocation saying a hundred thousand dollars goes to the golf course?
That is a.
I will confess.
That's a, that's a, no, that's a fair point.
I've not yet mastered this, so.
No, I, that's, you know, no, that is a fair point. We can add notations about that in, in the future on the expenditure side that of, of the one million seventy-four, nine oh two, a hundred thousand of that is support, is support from the General Fund versus other fees. But this is, but you're right, that is not specifically called out where, in the expenditure portion.
So the reason we don't have parking fines is because they're going to the ju- the Enterprise Fund now?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Do we get, do we get a budget of what that is pulling in?
The, if you look in the non, in the other funds section, M, M seven is the parking. Fund, and I think parking fines.
Yes, they are.
Separately.
They are.
It's four hundred and twenty thousand.
Parking fines, four twenty, yeah. Well, I've done my part this fiscal year.
So the, last year, we talked, wasn't there a slide that said that like over two million had been set aside for compensation, for first phase in compensation? Or something?
That's in the Employee Benefits section. It's under Citywide. And so the merit was like two million, two point one million, and then we had a million dollars offset for attrition. So if you look in.
And the reason I'm asking this is because I'm just trying to figure out, after, based on what we're doing right now, after we spend this one point two million dollars, where are we going to have any money to increase the salaries based on the projection? So is it this two point?
So the two point one was just money to cover the four point one seven merit increase. The one point two that was allocated from year end for the comp study is money that was transferred from the General Fund to a capital account, in the Capital Projects Account, for the study. Any pay increases or pay adjustments that would come out of that study would have to be a budget add. Or if there were money left over, that the study, left over from the one point two from the study, they could be used.
But it still has to be rolled over into like what we're talking about now as an expenditure. Then it's going to be a major.
You mean like pay adjustments?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's right here. This, am I reading this wrong? Is that somewhere or no?
That was, this was, we were talking about going forward, starting this year. That was the, we looked at that number, that two point two, and this is part, where the one point two is part of that. We were not able to get all the way to the two point two, but that was just in the future, we know we're going to, that was the number we were looking at.
But didn't we allocate the one point two from the surplus?
We allocated the one point, we allocated the one point two from the surplus, but we did not, those were moving forward. This is what we're going to have to look at, and we didn't have any actual dollars that we allocated for that at that time.
But you see how this reads?
Yes, I do. I understand. I understand where you, where you're coming from with that. Yeah. It was, it was that we need to look at that as a consideration as we move forward. So, but it does.
I, I, I have nothing. I try to keep up. But everything that I thought would work doesn't, so.
Well, and again, if we're just, you know, something that's been brought up a couple of times, I don't know if it's feasible or that has much money in it, but is looking at, what are, what are the list of work to be done by consultants that we hire that's budgeted but hasn't been spent yet? And just even historically, just looking at exactly how money going to consultants is spent and. I don't know if it's feasible, if there's a list of, I don't know if that's even feasible, that like something like that exists, but. People, people have brought it up several times in terms of money savings from the amount of consultants that are hired to do things routinely.
Yeah, we didn't use consultants and we just used employees, what you're saying.
Yeah, and just, and just getting a sense of what work upcoming is going, are we seeking consultants to hire?
I think a lot of that would be, if you did that, you would supplement that by reducing your number of FTEs or increasing them, you know, in terms of being able to handle those contracts.
Like, is there, I think maybe this is not what you're saying. You tell me if you're not. But are there scenarios where you would potentially hire someone for HR to do the comp study versus paying a consultant to do it? Like, is there someone who could become a staff member who has those skills?
And that's what I'm saying. If you did that, that's only, you know, one project. So what do you do after that project's done?
But that's what I'm saying. But if you paid someone a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, I don't know. That's, whatever that would be as a salary, even if it's like a long-term temp or something like that, is there a po-? Was this what you were asking?
Um.
I don't think, well, okay.
I mean, I guess it varies like contract by contract. I mean, because I, it's just a, a perception. It may not be accurate and reflected in monies that are spent, but there's a perception that they're, not everything, but many times consultants are hired to do work that ends up not impacting city policy or how the city functions. And there's things like Admiral County, I know it's, we're already deep in the weeds on it, but Admiral County updated their comp plan with no consultants hired. They did it in-house. And just thinking about, actually, I think overlaps with what you're saying. And, but in addition, are there any consulting contracts that maybe will not result in any policy change or changes in the city? Again, that's been a common perception. It may not be accurate that it's happening that routinely or there's that much money going to things like that. But again, it's just an area to look at if we're trying to find things to cut.
Or even what, I don't know how much the schools spent on their comp study, but if they have something in place that we are looking to put in place, is there something from what they did we could look at? My concern here is that if we spend one point two million and we are in this space this year, where are we going to get the money from once we spend the one point two million to implement the raises? Versus being able to pay less than that and spend the one point two million, set aside some of that for the raises and then. And I don't know if it's possible, but.
And, and not just that, but you know, consultants that have been hired to do studies. Like in twenty fifteen, a consultant was hired to do a parking study that resulted in no policy changes as of yet. Consultants have been hired to do small area plans, which haven't resulted in any policy changes. So just, again, an area.
Okay, let's see if there are any more public comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Sorry about that.
Good afternoon. Hello, is this on, this microphone? Yes, okay. So I am representing many people, but definitely the community. And the community, we demand that and expect that Charlotte, the city of Charlotte will align its policy goals and budgets and, and to, budgets to further race equity values and actively readdress our community interference of racial discrimination resulting in qualities, intentionally and unintentionally, which continues today. So I'm hoping that when we do the budget, is a, you have a racial inequality lens on it. And one of the things that I haven't heard much about in this budget that was presented to city council maybe mid-March, I mean, mid eighth, February, was the Adult DMC report, right? These folks are coming back in April to give recommendations and some things that we can work on. And I haven't heard anything about how this is going to work, right? And I know some of the recommendations are in tune with what's going on with the city and the county. But I know there's going to be extra stuff that might be happening there. Also, we want to make sure that the CRB is fully funded with two positions, the Director and the Data Person. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Markell Henderson. I'm a nineteen-year employee of the Fire Department. We're here championing for the community, not just us as employees. This budget cycle, I know it's been difficult sitting here, listening to you guys talk about how you're going to fill the gap for schools and everybody else that wants their piece of, piece of the pie. And we completely understand that. But our budget, as it stands now, it's going to have an impact on everyone. When I say everyone, that's everyone that sits in the room, because I assume that you work in the city, you live in the city, you have family that visits you in the city. We have people that come to concerts, shows, events at JPJ, the university. They all depend on the department in cases of, of emergency. I'm asking you to truly consider, you know, public safety, the public in this, because based on our budget, there will be changes to our service delivery model. We've, I've heard Mayor talk about how we want to do things better to be, be better for our employees, not to work harder, but to work smarter. We're going into a place where there's, the firefighters here will be working harder. That's, that's no doubt. There's no question about that. Like I said, we're, we're championing for the community. It's not, it's not us as an employee. We're not coming here asking for raises. We're not asking for changes in benefits. We're asking for more employees, FTEs, to specifically staff and ambulance to provide a service, an essential service to the community. So I ask you to consider those FTEs that our department has requested along the way. We think it's very important, and we're, we're city employees. All the things that you talked about for, for making employment better for us, we're, we're real employees. We're not department heads. Some of us are mid-level managers, informal managers. But we're the employee that you're talking about in making the city services work better. So I thank you, and I, like I said, please consider the additional staffing for the Fire Department.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Andrea Massey. I would like to just sort of reiterate what Mr. Foley said about making sure we're looking at equity and racial justice as part of our budget. And to Mayor Walker's points, as I was understanding them, that it feels like most of the things on the chopping block have not been built into the budget from last year, but seem like they're expendable on the chopping block kind of initiatives with the PCR B, with Unity Days, which is not my thing. What are the other couple of things on there? I think need to be baked in and stop looking at these things like they're, they are expendable when we haven't put other things on the list. The other thing on the list I would like to see that was on my list of things to talk about, and then Counselor Payne brought it up, is the consultant expenditure. I would love to be able to see that, and maybe it's in the bigger book and on detail on the website about how much we're spending on consultants. I've worked in corporate finance for about thirty years, and the amount of money and waste I've seen on consultants is unbelievable to see. what Councilor Payne was saying about the one they did on parking that never got into policy. I have seen maybe ten percent, I would guess, of consultant work actually changed policy. I do think we really have to look at that, and the other thing, when we were talking about the salaries of city staff versus teachers, I am not sure, and maybe it is apples to apples. In the, on this budget, just the summary, I can't see what overtime is being paid to city staff, and if we're paying that at time and a half, and how that's working, and if people are hourly versus salary, and how many hours they're putting in. I know teachers are putting in a lot more than their forty-ish hours a week for what they're getting paid, so I just want to make sure when we're looking at the increases of two percent versus three percent, we're looking at apples to apples, and I mean, I wish everybody could get much larger increases than that, but when we're talking about that city staff got over four last month, and I think a lot of that was to catch up where they should be, maybe this is the year for that to be at two percent, and hopefully teachers at three.
Teachers did do the, Dr. Atkins, I think I have it here, but could you just tell us, because there was a step in, you were similar last year, like you weren't lower. Uh-uh. Wait a minute, help please.
Mayor, I'm sorry, what was that question?
So they were saying that if you, your teachers received a lower salary increase last year, and our staff received a higher, and you did do, did you, what did you do last year?
Four percent.
Step plus three seven five, step plus three point seven five.
Which was a total of four, average of four percent.
So it's about the same.
And then the others, other staff were lower, we carve out teachers separately the past two years to give them a higher action.
So administrators got right around three percent, and teachers got five.
We did do living wage for support staff last year.
We did have staff to calculate what a decrease in, a one percent decrease would be, look like, it'll be right around four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. It's not a straight divide by three, the total amount, because of the different scales that the employees on. So if we decreased our teachers and our administrators and support staff by one percent, that would be four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
How y'all doing? Sorry I'm late. Okay, so I missed council, I was sick, but I watched it. First and foremost, I have no problem with certain people getting raises, there's nothing against the fire department. When you look at the budget, they do get a lot of money, and yes, they might be working overtime, but they just got a raise. You have lower staff city employees, parks and recs to be exact, let's talk about parks and recs for a minute. You just gave them a fifteen dollar raise, and then some of the departments are pushing their hours back. They're not even getting thirty, thirty-two hours, thirty-five hours, or the hours that they were used to getting. So you need to take a look at that, number one, because those are your lower wage employees that are not making a living wage. So they can't afford to live where they work, number one, you're not paying them enough. Number two, the teachers definitely need a raise, I'm, I definitely wholeheartedly support that one. But like, we keep giving the same people money, and I don't know why certain departments feel entitled that they can continue to keep getting more money or more raises, when you have lower level staff not making any money. My uncle being one, barely makes any money, he's given this city twenty-something, thirty-something years. He's not making anything, I don't know if it's twenty-seven or thirty years, thirty-one, I don't know how long he been here, but I know he ain't making no money. So like, that's something you guys really need to consider and think about when these other departments come and feel entitled. I'm not even mad at the police needing, the police need a raise. Your cops are leaving, going to other departments locally because they're making more money. But we keep giving the same amount of funding to the same departments every year, and there's nothing against the fire department, but y'all just got a lot of money, y'all just got a raise, and I know that. Not even that, you have race issues in the fire department, why we don't have a, a whole lot of black people in leadership positions there? What's the problem there? Like, since we want to be an equitable city, and we want to be diverse and inclusive for all, we need some black people in high positions in the fire department. We got a black chief, we got a black city manager, we got a whole lot of, you know, you, you acting like you want to do certain things in certain departments. But we need to, we need black people in leadership roles in parks and rec, we don't have no personal color leading in parks and recs, you have four white men though. You have all white men in the fire department. So these are things that I think you guys need to consider, you know, when you're thinking about giving money to certain departments. Let's look and see how diverse they are, and what they're doing as far as their staff. Like, we definitely need to do some in certain departments. But I support the police getting a raise, because I mean, if, if we want to have a better relationship with the police, y'all gotta pay them more. Maybe they'll have a little bit more respect for their citizens if you paid them more, and they can start working overtime and so forth. The teachers need a raise, we dealing with issues in the school system, I deal with them anyway, Dr. Atkins know me. First, last name, she probably know me by social security number, I ain't even gonna lie. But, you know, we dealing with a lot of stuff in this city, but you need to put the money in the right place. Stop giving it to the same people that feel entitled, that's all I gotta say, sorry I was late.
Well, Tiny, I'll keep this brief because I know you want to go home. So, all this political stuff happening with the elections got me thinking about the two thousand eight election, and during the two thousand eight election when Obama was running, God, those seem like good days now, don't they? But there was a, a debate in which a reporter asked a question and cited some Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it went something like this, that students of color in high school with a high school diploma are less likely to be employed after high school than white students without a high school diploma. And the point of all of that was basically to, to talk about this notion about hope. And, and, and these things that we're talking about are educational issues at the end of the day, because at the end, excuse me, at the end of the line, the things that you were talking about when it comes to the equity initiatives, things like the Human Rights Commission, things like the, the Civilian Review Board, programs like Home to Hope, housing, affordable housing, those are the kinds of programs that lead to, lead to students in high schools having hope that after they graduate, there's some modicum of equity waiting for them at the end of the line. Otherwise, why even stay in high school, why even bother paying attention? So these things that you're talking about when it comes to equity, they need to be protected in the budget, because they're intimately tied to educational outcomes. Right? So that's my, my pitch for basically the, the expenditure side, thinking about housing, affordable housing expenditures, expenditures, thinking about programs like Home to Hope, programs that do training for low-income folks in, in Charlottesville. Those programs need to be protected because they do promote education. On the revenue side, I will bring up, again, the parking lot, the parking garage. Because I think that you, you should check with Admiral County and see where they are in their own progress, because if they're behind, if they're behind schedule, maybe you can kick this down the road a year and figure out a way to, to provide them with their ninety spots in a more efficient way, in a more cost productive way. So I, I'm all for doing that if you can do that, and lastly, in terms of revenue, have you all looked at the amount of money that you, you basically spend on subsidizing corporate accounts in those parking garages? How much money are we, are we subsidizing corporate accounts for monthly, monthly parking spots? Is there maybe five hundred thousand dollars in the, in that bucket that we can, that we can take a look at? Maybe that's a place to get some more money, some more revenue for going forward. Anyway, thanks for, thanks for all the work you do.
And just so I won't forget, somewhere I read, and I'm gonna take better notes, but it's too many notes to take, too, but there was a cut with a program that provided services for ninth through twelfth graders at the high school, I think males. Kaki, do you know what I'm, this year?
Just walked in.
Okay.
Discovery?
With a smart something?
I don't remember, but it's just those type of things that whenever we have our conversation, is the type of stuff that we would want to, you know, look at. If we're talking about educational impact and, you know, people who could have assist with the group of people who struggle the most in getting them through high school and to the next level, then cutting that, wherever it was cut at, it was cut somewhere.
I think that was vibrant communities.
I don't know, I'm looking at it, it's in there. Okay, yeah, I read it, but it's just things like that that we have to make sure that there's, you know, synergy around, because again, we're just doing a little bit here and there versus really making, you know, a good faith effort to, to try something. I'll just say, you know, in terms of, was there anyone else who wanted to speak before? No, it's just once. Yeah. It's just one time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay.
I'll talk.
Hey, my name's Eric Giel, I'm a five-year employee of the fire department. So there was an article put out by the Daily Progress saying that police and fire were asking for a raise. I'm not trying to make a pitch, because I think President Wright, firefighter Henderson have put it out. We are asking for nine additional positions to staff in ambulance, and if we're gonna talk about equity in the city, we can talk about EMS, which is the base level of socialized medicine where inequity rolls down to. If somebody does not have insurance and their inhaler is out, they call us to give an ebulizer treatment. If they can't get a primary care appointment after hours, they call us, we make an assessment, we take them to the hospital. If somebody's car is broken down, we take them to the hospital. If somebody can't get a ride home from, I don't know, they're discharged from the hospital, their Uber kicked them out at the Salvation Army, we coordinate ways to get them home. We are asking for more staffing to increase capabilities for equity of services across this entire community. We are not asking for a raise. In my five years, I've gotten a cost of living raise every year, in which my premiums have gone up, not exactly to offset that. If anything, there was a market salary survey two years ago in which I got a raise, grateful for that. My only other raise has been the two years I went to school to become a paramedic to give better care to this community, because that is what we care about. I, I mean, I'm setting the record straight here, but when we talk about these positions, when we talk about taking units out of service, that is what we're fighting here, we're not asking for a bigger piece of the pie, we're asking for the pie to be maintained so we can keep doing our jobs correctly and effectively, which is what all of us care about here. So that is the priority for all of us when we come to these meetings. So I'm putting that out now, and let's read the article, not just the headline. Thank you.
And again, I'll highlight again, I mean, the number in the budget is that the percentage of EMS calls responded to within six minutes, twenty seconds, went from seventy-seven percent to I think forty-eight percent, so, I mean, sure there's.
I guess the question for me is, how are we gonna get to some common ground and how we're gonna get to this point? I don't think it's gonna happen in one year, because it's a pretty big ask, but I'm certainly committed, and I don't think I'm alone, in finding ways for us to get there, but I think that as you've heard, everyone's heard, like, this is not single the one department, like, there's just a lot of compromises being made. We, we would love to be paying more of our bus drivers so we have, provide better service for transportation. We all are gonna have to be creative and think out of the box, but to do that, we're gonna have to work together, and so I'm certainly committed to that, and I'm interested in ways that we can kind of come to the table and start to figure out what is this long-term plan forward to get us to the point where we all feel like we're able to serve this community in a way that it deserves to be served. Thank you all for continuing to come.
So I think that, were we supposed to end at seven?
At seven.
Yeah.
And I'm a babysitter situation, so.
Yeah. And we've, so we are clearly not going to make these decisions tonight, and I just need to think about it, so I may talk to council about like what a meeting in between this to just, because I, we were, we're supposed to have a strategic, you know, retreat by now, but that hasn't occurred, and we are definitely gonna either have to say no increases, or we're gonna have to set, agree upon some priorities so we don't keep having this type of session where nothing gets decided, and say that these are the things that are going to be funded. So it sounds like that, I mean, I don't know if we need to know all the information, all the CIP, or if we can have a meeting in between, you know, try to figure out those meeting, or if it's just like a two-to-one situation, and I, and try to figure out where we are, but anyway, I'll work on that, try to figure out what.
Well, I'm also wondering, next week when we have our nonprofit, maybe could we add a start at five and use the first hour that's not planned for to talk about these more general things, and then go into the nonprofits for the specific time that we said? I'm just trying to figure out times where we don't have to convene separately, because I don't want everyone setting all this up again and.
No, I understand, yeah, so I'll look at that.
Okay. Just a suggestion, just remember.
At five, okay.
I'll double check on what our reservation is.
Okay, so he'll let me know at the room, and then we'll, if everyone can make it, we'll try to figure that out. I don't even think I would know right now, but I'll make it work. And then I'll just send some information out for us to try to figure out how to make this decision before then, and.
But all I'm saying is, if staff has any, even just some chunk, smaller pieces that could become something more meaningful of things that don't impact us going back to our, our department specifically, I would just, we just, can you share that with us, like, you know?
Relate, yeah, relate to equipment, or who knows?
Just things that.
I guess from a bigger standpoint, so are we only looking at the one point eight for schools? Are we looking at one point eight plus five hundred thousand for merit change, plus one point three for fire? I mean, where, how big of a number is it that we're looking for is kind of where we need to get to?
That's what I'm saying, until I think we have this conversation, and unless you, I've heard you all say, I didn't hear you correctly, right, I can't even formulate the sentence, but if I heard you correctly, you are saying that you will have to cut to make this.
If you're not gonna raise taxes, then it require, every plus requires a negative at this point.
So again, we just spent, we have three million dollars out for school reconfiguration. If we are in this space now, it's not gonna happen, right, long-term. If we have one point two million dollars out for the compensation study, if we are here and we're not gonna raise, you know, taxes, then why are we spending one point two million? Like, those are the type of topics I'm gonna try to put together on a sheet and that we need to talk about, because if we, it doesn't, none of this makes much sense, right? There's nothing left, the schools have cut, the departments have cut. If we're gonna have this discussion about are we saying which departments do we think should cut more from the city to fund the schools, that is the conversation that we're having. And we need more time to have that conversation.
All I'm asking for is if there are just any little things, just to know what those are, so that we can.
I think it's easier if you just give us a number.
Right. I guess, I guess we just have to come up with a number, I mean, it's easier to think of a number if we get a sense of what the corresponding cuts mean and look like, not saying that any scenario is a good idea.
Once you give us a number, we'll be able to come back with something.
No, I hear, I hear you.
And it's gonna impact services.
No, I hear you. And I'll say, I said it last work session, but I'll say it again, because, you know, there is austerity in tax cuts coming from the federal government and the state government, and we are the direct entry point for democracy, and we deserve the heat, it's on us, but this is what austerity from the federal government looks like in communities when money is cut and we're forced to make really difficult decisions, because we don't have any support from the state or federal government, and
there's community services boards closing down across the state.
Doesn't mean, doesn't mean we're not accountable, but it's, it's, it's part of the, the picture.
And my other question is relative to FTEs. I'm assuming there is no flex in like that, because there's no flex for us to apply FTEs from one area to another at this point, because I know you went through and looked at all the things that haven't been filled. Because I know you went through and looked at all the things that haven't been filled and you've removed those.
We already accounted for that.
Okay. I'm just thinking about.
Where is it?
It's in the employee benefits section. So we have a million dollars built in for attrition, a million dollars of savings built in for attrition.
Yeah, no, it was four hundred thousand or something on that same page.
Well, we had a four hundred thousand dollar savings last year for health insurance, but that got zeroed out this year because we.
It wasn't health insurance.
That's just a number I had.
Yeah, there was healthcare savings. That was a four hundred thousand dollar savings that we had last year that it zeroed it out, that, that we didn't have the, the negative four hundred this year.
Okay, all right. So there's no reason to keep anyone else here. I understand what you all are saying, but I think we are having that conversation around that. And unless I'll ask, I don't think it's fair to ask the departments to do further cuts if you all think that that's the direction that you want to go.
I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm interested in seeing scenarios. I mean, maybe we want to say it doesn't involve department cuts and it's things like the golf fund or the parking fund. But I don't, I mean, I'm just interested to see scenarios and maybe we carve out things we don't want. It's not saying the scenarios are good ideas or we're going to do it, but just to get a sense of what it means.
But, but can the council get a number?
No, I know.
So we're just not arbitrarily going.
One million.
I mean, we could.
A million's a good start.
I mean, can y'all have y'all's meeting and then come back and, you know, have another meeting and y'all talk about exactly where you want to be in terms of what you want to fund. We've given you a list of the various things. Can y'all do that?
Yeah, it's just so hard for us because we don't know what is, we're being sacrificed for one thing or the other. And they're just.
No, no, you give us a number and we'll give you what we can do, what we can try to go back and do.
But how are you going to do it?
They're not going to make a decision. They're just going to propose some options.
We will have to go back and look at everything.
But that would still require staff to decrease their budgets.
What's the alternative?
I don't know. That's what I'm saying. I mean, it sounds like that's what the conversation that we need to have is if you're saying that there is something that is more important than everything else. And if we make that decision and say that, and then we are saying to them, we don't care what else you cut, right? If we're not going to say that, then we're saying that we care about the other budgets too. And if they've already made cuts, I don't understand like where we think this is coming from.
Well, we get, if we see scenarios, we get a result. And I think it's not just departments. I mean, again, it's things, again, they may not be worth doing, but just to explore things like the golf fund, the parking fund. Again, they may be terrible ideas, but to just see those scenarios, if, if there are avenues outside of departmental cuts or outside of things that related to personnel or people that exist. Again, I think there's some things out there, again, they may not be good ideas, but I mean, I'm fine. I'm fine with just to start. I guess, and we have, do we want to have the conversation later and think about, you know, like, the priorities or do we just want to give a number?
If you all are saying that those other funds, which I heard something different too, so maybe I'm listening too intensely or something, I don't know. But if those funds, if you're saying like the Park and Enterprise Fund, there's money in there. We know that it was set up for one thing. Is that what you all are saying? We are willing to redirect those funds to something. Then we have a number to play around with if you're not saying.
Yeah, those are the types of things I'm talking about, the things that are not direct departmental needs. And I just.
It's to see scenarios to, to evaluate for us, like, and it's, it's tough, they're tough decisions. But say, is four hundred thousand dollars for the CHAP have a bigger impact, positive impact on the community than four hundred thousand dollars in a parking fund? To, to just get scenarios to make that kind of evaluation.
And what I heard earlier from them is that they might take, there was a suggestion for them to take that money to offset the cost of this current garage, right? Or is that the type of scenarios that you all are going to?
That could certainly be something council considers.
But then you all will look at, based on reaching the four million dollar goal, how much the garages cost, whatever the future, somebody says something about Main Street parking or whatever. Like, what is being eliminated as a result of that?
Yeah, I mean, that would be something that Chris and Rick could, could help you with.
So I hear you all asking them to look at things like the Park and Enterprise Fund.
I, I would be curious to know whether there was a way to take that, to take the money from the fund and on some principled basis, apply it towards what is essentially, basically moving it from what is essentially a, a capital fund and outside of the general fund into some way that benefits the general fund. But I don't want to do it just by saying, oh, the pension fund is sitting there, let's go grab it.
No, no.
So I, but what, so yes, I would be generally interested in those kinds of answers. And particularly if there's an issue with parking, that seems to me to, to be a good one. Although I don't know how close that gets us to solving the one point eight million dollar problem this year. This, I, I'll come back to where I was before. If we're at one, if, if we decide we want to, again, maybe it's pick a number, but one point two million more for the schools and we cut the transit, transfer to eighty thousand, the.
All but eighty thousand was needed. That's what I heard.
Oh, all but eighty thousand?
Yes.
Okay. So we're going to.
I, I feel like staff could, I feel like we've given some.
Yeah, so I was taking eighty thousand away from that.
But they need a number.
A number.
Yeah. And what I was going to, that, that those transfers would get about four hundred thousand dollars in savings out of those, out of those transfers. And that gets us to eight hundred thousand dollars. And if we can find eight hundred thousand dollars with those other, other savings, then we're there.
Doing the number thing, I think if we are saying other, no department cuts, but things similar to the Park and Enterprise Fund, if, what could that possibly look like? What would those scenarios look like? Because then we need to hear that and then make sure that it's something that we want to do.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I agree. I just want, I just want to see scenarios to be able to.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But instead of giving them a number, like, that's what we're agreeing on, we could.
For other, well, they have to know when to stop.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with that eight hundred thousand dollar number then, again, just to see something.
I think we should find a million.
Sure. Let's make it a million.
Okay.